Morning, morning. Councillors. Stand up top. I know. We have a... It's a method this year. Okay. All right, councillors, we are at ten o'clock. I would like to start the meeting. I'd like to welcome all the councillors, the officials, the media, as well as the members of the public that are connected via the live stream. Our members or friends in the gallery, welcome to everybody. I'm now calling for a moment of silence. And councillors, during this moment of silence, I would like you to please spare a thought for our former city employee, Mr Terence Springer, from the Googlehead District Office Electrical, who tragically passed away while trying to repair some cables which were vandalised. So if we can stand for a moment of silence and also have his family in our thoughts. Thank you. The attendance register... You were asked to sign the attendance register when you came in. There are two venues today because of the regulations. So those that are in the chamber should have a white sticker and those in the banquet in hall should have a yellow sticker. And we would like you just to check you're in the right place for record purposes. And I am told that we do have a quorum. So we will proceed with the meeting. I will receive the final numbers shortly and then I will announce them to the meeting. Councillors, before I call on the executive mayor to address the meeting, I wish to attend to another matter, which is the election of an acting chief whip for today's council meeting, given that councillor Fasaki, the chief whip, is on family responsibility leave. We have a nomination for councillor Errol Anstey from councillor Pulisa Muzoliza and seconded by councillor Deena Messia. Are there any other nominations? Can we proceed with the election of councillor Anstey as the acting chief whip for this meeting? Thank you. No. Can we then move on to the mayor's address and I call on the mayor to now address councillor?
Madam Speaker, fellow councillors and city colleagues, residents of Cape Town, members of the media. Good morning. Good morning. Good evening. Salam aleikum. One kimakile kule nklangaliso. I would like to thank all the Cape Townians who came forward last week with donations for those who lost their homes in the fire in Langa over the Easter weekend. Our deepest condolences also go out to all of those in KwaZulu-Natal who lost loved ones as a result of the flooding in that province. It is a human tragedy that has shocked the country. I've spoken to Ettequini Mayor Kaunda regularly this past week and he has conveyed his sincere thanks to the city of Cape Town for the search and rescue team that Cape Town sent immediately after the tragedy to help in the relief efforts. We thank that...
Mayor, can I just ask the people in the gallery to please put those signs down? This is your first warning. Otherwise, law enforcement will remove them. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. We thank that professional team for the work they did, the disaster risk management staff who worked on the Langa fire and all Cape Townians who donated for the truck of goods we sent to KZN. Speaker, before I begin today, we are just days away from the sighting of the moon at the end of Ramadan. We've also celebrated Easter and Passover in the last few weeks. This period in which all three of the Abrahamic faiths have celebrated together has demonstrated the very best of Cape Town's cultural, religious and historical plurality. Early in January...
Unfortunately, this chamber is governed by different rules. Can you please leave the chamber?
No, we can't leave. Mayor, my...
I have asked you to remove the signs.
Madam... Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I may, if I may make... Ma'am, ma'am, in the gallery, I address myself too directly, if I may, madam speaker. I know this is out of order. I have absolutely no objection to peaceful, quiet protest. If you disturb my speech, however, that's a different story. You are... I'm quite happy with you to hold up your sign as long as you are peaceful and not disturbing. Is that fine?
I'll ask you a question.
No.
No, this is not your opportunity.
No, you may not ask a question.
You have been asked to move... You have been asked to move. If you don't move, you will be removed. Councillors, order please so that the mayor can continue. Councillors. Councillor Dambuzo, I'm naming you once. Thank you, Mr Mayor. You may continue. Councillor Dambuzo, I'm naming you twice.
No, 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 madam speaker, madam speaker. Can you also name that lady there, madam speaker?
Councillors. Councillors, will you... Councillors. Councillor, I will then report... Then report the councillor to me and I'll deal with it. Councillor. Councillor. I'm asking you to please be quiet while the mayor has his address.
Speaker, all we are asking is that you exercise fairness. When a DA councillor was standing up and shouting, you did not say anything. And I... And I ask you, Speaker, Dambuzo must not be an easy target. Because you immediately started saying Dambuzo. Meanwhile, you had a DA councillor standing up. I ask you to exercise fairness.
Once the people had left the gallery, the councillor sat down and we proceeded to allow the mayor to talk. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, everyone in a constitutional democracy has a right to peaceful protest. There is no objection there, but you do not have a right to disrupt the meeting. Unfortunately, the protesters today went beyond peaceful protests and tried to disrupt this meeting. I think it would only be appropriate for me to just go back a paragraph or two to make sure that everyone gets that message of thanks to all Cape Townians. I would like to thank all Cape Townians, madam speaker, who came forward with donations for those who lost homes in the fire in Langa over the Easter weekend. Our deepest condolences also go to all of those in KwaZulu-Natal who lost loved ones as a result of the flooding in that province. It is a human tragedy that has shocked the country. I've spoken regularly to Ettequini Mayor Kaunda over this week and he has conveyed his sincere thanks to the city of Cape Town for the team that we sent immediately after the tragedy to help in the relief efforts. We thank that professional team for the work they did, the disaster risk management staff who worked on the Langa fire and all Cape Townians who donated for the truck of goods we sent to KZN. Speaker, before I begin, we are just days away from the sighting of the moon at the end of Ramadan. We've also celebrated Easter and Passover. This period in which all three of the Abrahamic faiths celebrated together has demonstrated the very best of Cape Town's cultural, religious and historical plurality. Early in January, I instructed our policy team in the city to begin work on a new document setting out a standard operating procedure that would resolve once and for all the issue of noise complaints relating to places of worship. Our goal was clear: to give every faith community in Cape Town the peace of mind of knowing that this issue is now sorted, done and resolved. Our new standard operating procedure, which we released yesterday, makes it clear that the bylaw provisions on noise disturbances will not apply to correctly zoned places of worship. This document provides surety and a guarantee of religious freedom for correctly zoned places of worship. It also balances those freedoms. It also balances those freedoms by not giving a blanket exemption for unzoned premises, which is not reasonable or fair in a plural constitutional democracy. We have now completed this new policy document and we have consulted with the Muslim Judicial Council in particular about it. And we are extremely grateful for their statement of blessing and support. Notwithstanding this, Speaker, I expect that some here will continue to try to ferment religious division on this issue. I hope in this holy month that you will all join me in taking a very dim view indeed of those who would cynically abuse religion for political gain. I am also grateful to the other councillors amongst us who have drawn attention to this issue, one of whom has placed the matter on the order paper today for debate. While I welcome their attention to the issue, I am sure that they share in my pleasure today. I'm sure that they will share in my pleasure today.
Uh, Madam Speaker, there are disturbing scenes, man, that's what I was seeing in this chamber. Can, can... Please, can we...
Just try not to look there. Look at me.
Councillors, the mayor has the floor.
While, while we welcome their attention to this issue, I am sure that they will share my pleasure in the news that I've just announced and the obvious implication of that announcement, that their motion is now unfortunately moot as the policy document we prepared and which has been under preparation for months is now finalized and the matter is now well and truly dealt with. We are also looking, Madam Speaker, for better ways to demonstrate our commitment to inclusivity in meaningful ways. Thank you. I'm getting there. It'll... Fellow councillors, it will soon be six months since this new administration began its term of office. While there are still many challenges ahead, it gives me great pride to look back at what we have already achieved in this short period. And I hope that all of those residents who have joined in our many clean-ups over the past months, who have joined our ward committees and our neighbourhood structures and who actively share their ideas for a better Cape Town with us, share in that pride. At the same time, I'm filled with hope and excitement for what we are still able to achieve in the coming months and years. As mayor, I am committed to doing more. This government and these councillors are committed to doing more. And I know that every one of our city officials shares that commitment to doing more. In particular, I'm dedicated to doing more in those policy areas where the national government is really struggling to deliver. This is not because we want to take power for its own sake. It is because we have an obligation to make sure that every Cape Italian gets the services they deserve. I refuse to allow the residents of Cape Town to be vulnerable because of another government's incapacity. If a local or regional government is able to carry out the functions that the national government is failing to fulfil, then those functions should be devolved to that local or regional authority. This is what I call functional federalism. Thankfully, the constitution was, was written with precisely this in mind. Section 156.4 of the constitution reads that a municipality must, not may, not can, must be assigned a function when there is agreement between the national and local governments and where there is adequate capacity, demonstrated capacity at the municipal level, to perform that function. Speaker, there are many people in South Africa who say that our country is either already a failed state or is fast becoming one. It does not matter whether you agree with that assessment or not. What matters is that in Cape Town, we refuse to let it happen. What matters for South Africa is what we do here to put our country on the correct path. We need to show people in Cape Town and wherever they live that state failure does not need to be inevitable. We need to show people that there are places in South Africa where things work, where governments strive for excellence, where citizens are listened to and responded to and where services are delivered for everybody. And so in the city of Cape Town, we are doing all we can to effectively fulfil all of the functions that are traditionally assigned to local government. But we are going further than that. We are starting to move into policy areas that have historically been out of our scope. Take policing, for example. In terms of the constitution, police is overwhelmingly a national competency under the Minister of Police and the South African Police Service. Local government police have traditionally been limited to policing bylaws and traffic violations. But through writing and passing new local and provincial legislation under successive dear administrations, both here and in the province, over the past decade, and ensuring the proper interpretation of national legislation, crucial that, we have empowered our officers to go beyond these previously limited responsibilities. The South African Police Service, despite the bravery of some exceptional police officers, is by and large losing in the fight against violent criminals. To make matters worse, in the Western Cape in particular, the national SAPS management has chronically under-resourced the province and the city. Since 2018, colleagues, there's been a shortage, a withdrawal of over 500 SAPS officers here. And although there has recently been an additional deployment, even this deployment is a full 821 offices fewer than what was budgeted for. This has severely hampered crime fighting in our city. This is why the city of Cape Town and the Western Cape government have worked together to deploy 1100, nearly 1100 extra law enforcement officers under the LEAP programme to the 11 worst crime hotspots in our city. And we have already seen what dedicated boots on the ground can achieve. While crime in the rest of the country is on the up, we have seen a marked decrease in our crime hotspots in Cape Town, making Cape Town the only metro in the country, the only metro in the country where violent crime is going down. This is evident in the 40.5% reduction in murder in Kryfentain, a 24.1% decrease in Njunga, a 21.1% drop in murder in Kailecha and a 14.5% drop in murder in Harare, all areas where we have deployed dedicated LEAP units. Some of these hotspots have now dropped off the murder capital lists that they have dominated for a decade or more. While this progress is enormously encouraging, it is still too soon to celebrate. We must keep going until every man, woman and child in this city feels safer in their homes and in their neighbourhoods. That's why we will continue to find more money in our budgets to train and deploy additional police officers. And we will continue to make the case to our colleagues in the province for more money from them as well. In my address to council on the tabling of the draft budget last month, I announced that the city of Cape Town will be providing this year alone for 150 new officers and 80 new auxiliary officers for a total of 230 new officers in one year. We've allocated 66 million rand to expanding our training college so we can produce more officers over the coming three years, including staff, programmes and property improvements. 50 million is allocated for the expansion of our CCTV and licence plate recognition camera network in 2022 alone. 36 million for new crime fighting aerial technology. 7.6 million on new and innovative drone programme and 78 million rand on dash cams and body cams. We are also starting a new protection unit for frontline staff and community facilities. And we will continue with our plans to take more metro police officers out of their offices and onto the streets where they can take the fight to criminals. Madam Speaker, we want everyone who lives in a LEAP deployment area to know and feel the greatest safety that this investment is delivering. We want residents to know that they live in a LEAP area and we want criminals to know it too. "Don't even try it", is our message, "because you will get caught". That is the whole point. Cape Townians can feel safer because of these investments. So we are not stopping at just boots on the ground. We want to develop those communities themselves and build partnerships with active citizens. We want to work more closely with neighbourhood watchers. We want to work more closely with neighbourhood watchers in LEAP neighbourhoods and we are going to dedicate millions more for neighbourhood watch equipment and training specifically in those LEAP areas. And our small business and entrepreneurial support teams will move into those areas and give training and support to small businesses and entrepreneurs in those communities. And our sewage pipe replacement and infrastructure investment will improve basic services and dignity in those areas. This is a whole of society approach to bringing violence down and making communities safer. Madam Speaker, we have shown that when we take more control, we deliver better for the people of Cape Town. And that is why we are pushing to take more responsibility for our city's energy needs too. I don't want to spell out here how the national government has failed to manage the country's power supply. We all know that. All of us feel the inconvenience of load shedding on a regular basis and we see the impact that it has on service delivery, on businesses and on jobs. In Cape Town, we refuse to have our local economy bled dry by load shedding. Small businesses suffer and manufacturing jobs move offshore because of national government's inability to ensure such a basic service, a reliable and stable supply of electricity. We are already in a position, as you know, to provide our customers with relief and protection from one level of load shedding. Last week, when Escom customers were facing six hours of load shedding a day on stage four, city customers were on stage two or stage three. That is thanks to our Energy Directorate's excellent maintenance of the Stienbrus Hydro Pump Storage Scheme. Going forward, as you will have seen in the budget, we will invest heavily in the refurbishment and upgrade of Stienbrus to keep Capetonians protected from that extra stage of load shedding. This week, councillor Van Rienen and I and our teams met with Escom and we discussed what can be done to transfer Escom customers onto the city's system so that every Capetonian can be protected from at least one stage of load shedding. The city's energy team is now busy with a detailed analysis of Escom supply areas and Escom has pledged their full support and cooperation in providing us with the necessary information for this analysis and in working together towards a transfer process after that. Of course, ultimately, we don't want to stop there. We want to go much further in protecting our residents. We want to go from protecting them from one stage of load shedding to freeing them from load shedding in Cape Town altogether over time. That's why we are moving so quickly to bring independent power producers on board, adding more independently generated electricity to our grid and further reducing our reliance on Escom. This is a journey that will take time and that is why it's so important that we start as early as possible and move with real ambition and aggression to get this done. I announced in my budget speech last month that embedded commercial generators will no longer be compelled to be net consumers of city supplied power. In fact, they will be incentivised to be net producers. This is a major policy shift that will see a huge contribution being made to our energy grid and combined with the other interventions I've outlined, will help to make Cape Town the first load shedding free city in South Africa. Speaker, it is absolutely clear that capable local governments and not the national government are best positioned to deliver the services needed by residents. We are showing what functional federalism looks like and what can and is being done right here in this city to improve people's lives. I think every councillor here and every resident of our city shares my frustration with the national government-controlled passenger rail service run by Prasa. National government's rail service has reached crisis point, in fact, it's far past crisis point, with just 33 operational train sets compared to 95 train sets just a decade or so ago. In February, Prasa reported to the Western Cape Provincial Parliament Standing Committee on Transport and Public Works about its rail service in the province, in which it revealed that in June 2019, Prasa was operating 444 train trips every day in Cape Town. In early 2020, before the start of the pandemic, this had already dropped by about 50% to 270 daily trips. This year, there are no more than 153 train trips on a good day across the city, a more than 66% reduction in availability of the service. And so I am very pleased to announce here today that the City of Cape Town is now ready to proceed with a detailed feasibility study for the devolution of the Metropolitan Rail Service to this metro. Like with ending load shedding, projects of this scale and ambition take time and so it's essential that we start immediately. We have already issued the tender and the work will begin as soon on the very first day of the new financial year. I do not think this first part of the project needs to take a long time and I know that our maker member for urban mobility councillor Rob Quintus and his team will ensure that not a second is wasted here. Let's get it done as quickly as possible so we can move on with getting the trains working. In recent days, there has been a sea change in policy statements from the national government. I hope you've seen these. We are now seeing regular and substantive verbal commitments to privatisation in South Africa, not from us, who've been calling for this for years, decades, but from the national government itself. Their resistance to this obvious policy has cost South Africa dearly already and has left all of these essential services in a state of advanced collapse. But we are greatly encouraged that they are now embracing the idea and we want to make sure that Cape Town is at the forefront. The truth is this, government should not be in the business of running businesses. Government is there to regulate, set the rules of engagement, ensure competition and fairness, provide essential infrastructure and uphold the rule of law. So we hope that these recent statements, literally in the last few days, are meaningful and not just more lip service being paid to the necessary economic reforms. And we will certainly test the sincerity of these statements and we intend to do it soon and we intend to do it here. I must say that early signs are very encouraging. Just earlier this week, we received a rather extraordinary letter from the Minister of Finance, which not only gives us the green light to conduct the Passenger Rail Feasibility Study, a big about turn from that department's position just a year ago, but fully endorses our intended policy direction in favour of devolution of this critical function. In this letter, Minister Enok Gomwana expresses the view, on behalf of the National Treasury no less, that a study of this kind is not only desirable but essential and should be carried out by the city. Furthermore, that municipalities that can do it should be assigned the function by agreement and as long as there is adequate capacity at the municipal level to perform this function, which there no doubt is here. The minister further adds that the policy intent in the White Paper on Transport Policy and the draft White Paper on Rail Transport Policy is for public transport to be devolved to the lowest level. Colleagues, this is a big deal because up until now, the National Treasury and the national government has tried to block the feasibility study. There is indeed a new wind blowing. I want to thank Minister Gomwana for the national government's encouraging and supportive letter. It seems that some sections of the national government agree with our analysis that functional federalism is the way to go and I hope that in time, more of their colleagues will adopt the same stance and be prepared to devolve more functions to us. Our aim is to ensure that the trains run on time, that they are safe to travel on and that they are the preferred mode of transport for our citizens. This is essential if we are to connect our city and our residents to one another, to unlock economic opportunity and relieve the congestion on our roads and to unstitch the legacy of group areas. As Cape Town works to devolve these crucial services, we are also mindful that we only reach our goals through continued sound financial management. The ongoing turnaround of other metros confirms that the responsible financial management we enjoy in Cape Town is non-negotiable to making much more progress. Fat nomar meri furbeel van Twane. Vardhurkemeester Randall Williams in the Nive D A Koalisi Regering. Hard work omi te kares van financielen wanbesteer onder die A N C oomte keer. Dit is die rech dankzij die financiële voeding wat Twane nu maak. Dat hulle hi die afgelopen werk aangekondigd is dat 60 miljoen rand beskikbaar gemaak is om die sogenamde Pyramid Krachtstasi wat in 2019 afgebrand is. Ga nou herstelbod. Hi die herstelver kan betrobarre elektricitat aan die nuerde van triturië herstel. The 60 million rand upgrade of the Pyramid Substation in Twane is a clear example of how DA good governance directly translates into improved services for residents on the ground. Madam Speaker, colleagues, I am a huge believer in this beautiful country of ours. I know that we face many challenges, we all know that. We face many challenges as a nation but I am convinced that if we work hard, we can fix any problem. It starts here at local level. I want Cape Town to become the standard bearer for good governance in South Africa, a place where things work and every citizen is given a fair chance to live a better life. That does not mean that we are in competition with other spheres of government. We are all South Africans and we should all want our country to succeed as quickly as possible. It is my sincere hope that Cape Town will be given the space and the resources to show South Africa what good governance and functional federalism looks like. We will do this by collaborating with our colleagues in national and provincial governments and sharing knowledge and expertise with other cities. I fully intend for this city to take greater control of its own destiny, as envisaged in our constitution. Let us be a beacon of hope for every citizen of our magnificent country. And if there is to be sweeping economic reform in our country that revives the dry bones of our economy and sets South Africa finally on the path of prosperity, then ladies and gentlemen, let it start here in Cape Town and let it start with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That brings us to the questions. The first question is councillor Leonard Max.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you for the message, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your commitment to safety and security. However, it is a fact that the infrastructure of the city and it is not only isolated in the city of Cape Town but all municipalities are suffering at the hand of criminals who destroy the infrastructure, like cables and other equipment. Don't you think that it is time that the city promulgate a by-law compelling scrapyard owners first to report any equipment like cables or identified equipment which belongs to the city infrastructure to report it to law enforcement first for clearance by law enforcement before they can buy that material? Otherwise, it's like drugs. Drugs, you will arrest, you will have drugs in the circulation as long as there's a set-off, if people buys. And similar to this infrastructure, we have to stop that at a particular point. Will you support such initiative?
Mayor, would you like to take all the questions and then respond?
No, that's fine. I can respond one by one. Thank you, Advocate Max, for the question. You are absolutely right to draw attention to the extraordinary problem we face, really epidemic levels of cable theft and infrastructure vandalism. And this is the case across cities. I see that Mayor Mpuo Palata this morning was out on patrol with police and law enforcement doing some copper theft, cable theft busts. I must tell you that the problem is not so much scrapyards... Well, there may indeed be a big problem with unethical scrap dealers and scrapyards accepting product which they know to belong to the city. But if they are already doing that, I don't think that a by-law saying that they may not do that is going to stop them. The trouble is more that by the time the copper arrives at the scrapyard, it is impossible to identify as belonging to either Transnet, Prasa, the city, Telkom and so on. And that's because it's been burnt, melted and any signs scratched or scraped off. And so we are thinking of really innovative and sometimes quite drastic new measures, for example, to embed chemical signatures inside the copper itself that don't rely on simply printing a name on the outside of the copper sheath, that the copper itself, even if it is melted, can be tested and can be identified as belonging to the city of Cape Town. We are taking the lead from Etiquini actually on testing some pretty drastic new security measures like pepper spray inside our substations and meter boxes so that those who try to break into them illegally get something more than they bargained for. We have to, we have to think of all these kind of innovative solutions. I'm just not sure, in the same way that legislation around rhinohorn, for example, does very little to limit the trade in rhinohorn and so too one could argue for the legislation around drugs. I'm not sure that the answer lies in legislation. I think the legislation is already very prescriptive about what can be sold at scrapyards. And so the common thing that you will hear everywhere is, well, we must simply ban the export of copper from South Africa. Now, South Africa exports about 25 tonnes of copper a year and we do not have a single copper mine in South Africa. So that copper is coming directly from cables mainly. But it is already extremely difficult, near impossible, to export copper from a South African port. So those 25 tonnes are being exported by hiding them inside containers containing other things, by putting them inside vehicles, covering them in tonnes of clothes, where it is really difficult for customs officers to ever find it. So I don't think that the answer always necessarily lies in stricter legislation. It has to lie in stricter enforcement and ultimately, the root cause of the issue is this, anything with a resale value is going to be sold because people are cash poor. First and foremost, people are cash poor. And so the interventions that we are making on the supply side, on the economic growth side, I think over time will do much more to lessen copper and infrastructure vandalism than anything else. I will just make one other point, the aerial surveillance capacity that we're investing in in this budget holds great promise for copper theft in particular. This is a technology, I don't know if you followed the debate, along the Richards Bay Coal Line, Advocate Max. The Richards Bay Coal Line provides South Africa with about 3 billion US dollars in exports earnings every month when it runs. At the moment, it is not running at all. You've seen Transnet has declared force majeure because of cable theft along that line. Now, the mining companies, the big coal miners, have themselves taken over the security along that line and have achieved tremendous success in bringing down copper theft along that line using the same aerial technology that we are investing in now in Cape Town in this budget. That's where the proof of concept has come from. But again, going back to this obsession with central control, Transnet has refused to allow that security paid for by the private coal mining companies to continue because it isn't done by them. This is the kind of short-sighted central control obsession, policy mind that really hurts our country. But I sincerely hope that this investment that we're making in this aerial technology will deliver the same kind of results that we saw there. I don't know if you'd like to add anything, Alderman?
No, Mayor, I think you covered the essentials. Although we have succeeded in increasing the number of arrests quite a lot, the problem remains with the convictions... the problem remains with the convictions and the consequences of that arrest. A lot of hard work and often dangerous work goes into achieving those arrests and very often they come to naught. I think we had one two-week period where we did nine arrests on Stellenbosch Arterio alone, mainly resulting from the Freedom Farm area, which is notorious for its metal theft activities. Those penalties are often coming to very little and that is a big part of why we are starting to do watching briefs on these cases through the investigators we are deploying through the Safety and Security Investigations Unit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Kita Zulilo. She's in the banquet hall. She'll be on the screen shortly. I hope.
As long as I can be heard, I'm okay. I don't need to be seen. Okay. Thank you so much, Speaker. Mr. Mayor, in your opening address, you've mentioned the fire victims in Langa and also the floods in KZN. So my question to you is, what has the city done to help support both the five victims in Langa and the people of KZN? Thank you.
Okay, let me talk about KZN first. When we saw those terrible floods happen on the Saturday night and Sunday morning, the city reached out to the government in Ettequini immediately. I tried to make contact with Mayor Kahunda on the same day. It was difficult to get hold of him, understandably. He was dealing with a major crisis. But I did reach him the next day and we agreed that Cape Town would be able to send a team. And the team was very willing to go. It was a team of volunteers. They went and they did exceptional work. They were professional fire and rescue crew. They did exceptional work sifting through the rubble and the mud on those early few days when it was difficult for local disaster management forces to know exactly where to prioritize their work. They were spread extremely thin on the ground and we're obviously dealing with a huge number of fatalities, now very close to 500. And we then also put out a call, you will know, on social media and via our councillors, for donations from residents of the city to send up to Durban, to Ettequini. The biggest concern, actually, and this is what Mayor Kahunda told me, and this is a terrible irony of having floods, there's so much water around, but the biggest crisis was actually fresh water. Because the water had knocked out the water treatment facilities and filled them with sand and mud. And so there was a real, and there remains today, a real crisis with fresh water. So we were thrilled that many Capetonians answered our call for donations and delivered thousands and thousands of litres of fresh water, which we, also some non-perishable food and blankets and so on, which we loaded up into a big truck and took up to KZN. When the team returned, they were absolutely exhausted, but had really felt like they had made a positive difference. And the mayor called me again to convey his thanks, as I said in the speech, and asked us to send a second team, which we were more than prepared to do. When we reached out to KZN Disaster Management, it was clear that in the interim time there had been hundreds of disaster volunteers descending on the province from Johannesburg, from Twane, from other provinces, from SA and DF, of course, had been deployed in the interim by the president. And so we felt that it was probably best to let them take over as the lead agency on the ground. Then, for the fire victims in Langa, I know that on the evening of the fires, our team were there with really great speed. I know that the fire department was there within minutes. And they suffered some kind of violence and attacks from some members of the community, but they still ended up doing essential work and helping to douse those fires. I know that our disaster management teams and the acting mayor at the time was Eddie Andrews, was councillor Andrews, were there the very next morning over that Easter weekend. And so I don't know if you want to add to that, councillor?
Mayor, no, it was, I took over the Monday. Zahid was there on the Saturday and the Sunday. But he was there on both days and engaged extensively with the leadership just to appease in that we are on the ground and will be further assisted.
Okay, great. I know that our disaster risk management teams were helping to try and arrange alternative accommodation for those who needed it. They were obviously distributing fresh water. And I know that already by the Sunday, and certainly by the Monday, many members of that community had already begun the reconstruction phase. And also, I must also give massive credit to the gift of the givers, who we had dinner with last night, councillor Kasim and I, and councillor Havashé was also there last night. And I did pass on that thanks to them as well for the work that they did within minutes or hours to be on site to help. Thank you, councillor Zulilo.
Thank you, Alderman Sutashi.
No, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. Firstly, just before I put a question to the mayor, I want to appreciate the congratulatory messages of myself and my colleague, Alderman Andrews. We were kept about, what, two weeks ago now? He was doing the undergrad, I was doing the post-grad. We just hoped, I mean, we just hoped that the likes of Alderman JP Smith and Limberg would follow suit, not claim qualifications that they don't have. That one, let's put it aside. Mr. Mayor, let's put this to context so that we don't leave this room with the impression that we are living in a federal state. There is one government in South Africa. With one constitution, it's a unitary state. I think it must sing to everyone that we've got one government with three spheres of governments. These three spheres of government, they are cooperating and complement each other. Go and read section 152 of the constitution. It's very clear. So let us, we will respond as the ANC to your speech because this platform disempowers us to engage with the misinformation that we have delivered today. Here in the House, you deal with other spheres of government, in particular national government. When you are outside of this House, you speak frankly and you speak in support of the initiatives that other governments are doing. Let me ask this question: Why do you think your former MEC, Bonging Osimadikizela, refused to devolve some of the functions of housing to the city of Cape Town? The devolution of the accreditation and also the assignment function to the city of Cape Town? Go and get the information why he refused. Because you have made a lot of claims here, Mr. Mayor, that you are trying to portray to the national government how federalism is working. Yet your colleagues here in the province refused to give that function to the city of Cape Town. Go and find out. We will respond, Madam Speaker, to that speech of the mayor because the mayor here has made a number of serious insinuations which we must be able to respond as an opposition here in the city of Cape Town. So we'll get access to your speech, we'll respond point by point, and then we'll give to everybody to see. And I am not sure about the data that you are using in terms of the information about crime here in the Western Cape. Your own colleague here in the province, the one that has been suspended by your party, Albert Fries, the recent one that has been appointed by Alan Windi, they agreed, they agreed with the information that was tabled by Minister Kayele. They said, it's accurate, this province is the only province that has received most deployment, more than any other province. Which data are you using? If you want to distribute that data, put your data here and then we look at the data of national government and see who is lying. So we're not going to accept the verbal reports that we see. We want to see it in black and white so that we can be able to win. Thank you very much.
Alderman Sutashi, I'm so pleased that you have recently received your degree and I congratulate you on that capping. But it does not seem like that there was a module on the constitution in that degree. So, so... Let me help you, sir. There is not one government in South Africa. That is self-evidently true. That is self-evidently true. This government here was elected by an electorate in an election where people voted for a different political party, an entirely different political party, to describe them as the same government.
Mayor, clearly you're the one that knows the constitution here.
Allow the mayor to respond, please.
I'll wait for you to catch up in understanding the constitution.
Okay, let him respond and then you can respond once you've read the thing.
In other parts of the country, there are coalition governments, there are governments led by other minority, tiny little parties and...
Alderman Sutashi, allow the mayor to respond.
In all of the Gauteng metros, in fact, in most of the Gauteng municipalities, there's now a DA-led government. To describe those as the same government is ludicrous. They were elected on their own mandate, on their own manifesto, in their own...
Councillor Sutashi, councillor Sutashi, you asked a question. Allow the man to respond. And ask your councillors, please, to do the same. Can I quiet, please?
Here is the, yes.
No, 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 Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker.
Alderman, if you'll let me answer.
Okay.
I have been insulted.
All right, then.
And I will respond accordingly to JP.
Okay, but in this instance...
JP Smith is stupid.
No, in this... So please, please give me, please, give me a complaint. Alderman Sutashi, Alderman Sutashi, you asked for a question to the mayor. Allow the mayor to respond. He's just been insulted. JP, I'll name you once. Okay, thank you.
JP Smith must apologize, Chair Speaker.
You're going to apologize. All right, councillors. Alderman, Alderman Sutashi, Alderman Sutashi.
Speaker, point of order.
Okay.
Point of order, speaker.
Alderman Sutashi, if you want an apology, allow the man time to apologize.
Speaker, point of order. Can I continue?
But how, councillor Alderman Smith?
Speaker.
Have a pillowcase up.
You are a veteran of politics. Speaker.
So Alderman, there is also... Allow Alderman Smith to respond. You've asked the question after interjecting into the mayor's response.
Speaker.
All right. Question is with them. Allow him to respond, Alderman Smith.
Speaker, sir, by virtue of context, councillor Sutashi likes doling it out. He doesn't like taking it. And he's prolific with his own misinformation. However, I do feel, I am sorry that I called him stupid. I just assumed everybody knew, speaker.
Madam Speaker. No, Madam Speaker.
That's not an apology. Speaker. Alderman, Alderman Sutashi. Alderman Sutashi.
Must retract.
Alderman Sutashi, there is a mechanism in terms of the rules of order. You may mail a complaint and we will deal with it. Councillor Makazi. Councillor Makazi. Speaker. Councillor Makazi.
Speaker.
I think with what, with the response of JP Smith into this chamber, he is not apologizing. At the end, he says he thought everybody knew. That's an insult. It can't be accepted. Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order.
All right. So then give me a complaint in writing and we'll deal with it in a formal way.
No, no, no.
Councillors, what you have succeeded in doing is using up the time for questions. So you either all keep quiet and we can have another question, or we're going to move on.
We are not going to write a question to you.
Speaker. Makazi, can you please ask your councillors to...
No, no, no.
May you speak.
Speaker. We don't have a problem, we don't have a problem with the mayor continuing. But what we're not going to allow here, Imas Sutash, we're not going to allow a situation where rules are flouted here. You have asked JP Smith to withdraw and he did not do that. And we are not going to be prepared to write a complaint to your office about something that has happened live here. If he wants to apologize, he must apologize. If he doesn't want to, he must say, no, he doesn't want to. Then we'll see how to deal with that. Person, point of order.
So councillor Makazi, I did ask Alderman Smith to respond. He responded. If we're not happy with that response, we will deal with it. The mayor is now going to continue.
I think, Speaker, Iman, Iman? I think the manager next to you is misleading you as well. Because I'm saying, at the end, he further made another insult by saying he thought everybody knew Sutasha was stupid. Speaker, point of order. When I answer, you must not start, nee. You must not start.
Madam Speaker.
Okay, councillors, councillors, now I'm going to make a ruling, okay? You have lodged a complaint. Alderman Smith responded. You're not happy with it. We will deal with it outside of the meeting. This is question time. It is, there is a mechanism for you to deal with it. The mayor is going to respond to the question and then we will move on.
Madam Speaker, point of order. Speaker, does that mean that you are afraid of JP?
I'm not afraid of JP, but it doesn't help to throw tit-for-tat across this meeting when there are other mechanisms to deal with it. So must we see what to do with him? Must we see what to do with JP?
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Speaker.
Speaker.
Councillor Savant, point of order.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much. Councillor Sutash is used to lying. He's so used to lying.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To accept the truth.
We can't be told by things.
Point of order. Madam Speaker, point of order. Point of order. Madam Speaker. Point of order, councillor. Point of order.
May I be reasonable?
Madam Speaker, point of order. Point of order.
Madam Speaker.
Point of order.
Madam Speaker, I was hoping...
Point of order, councillors, please. Councillors, please. Point of order. Councillor Badella has raised a point of order.
No, Madam Speaker, my concern, my concern is directed to you no longer, Alderman JP Smith. He was given an opportunity to apologize, instead insulted back. Now you are supposed to protect it at the corum of the meeting. And as I'm looking now, it's going to deteriorate because he has insulted back. Now, what is your approach going with this meeting? Because I can see that the meeting is going to deteriorate from now. What is your approach?
No savan, duwane, is, no savan, duwane. So we're in question time for the mayor. The mayor is trying to respond. This is not the time. I want to point out, I want to point out that there is a mechanism for debate, there's rules of order, which allow for this sort of comments. And we deal with them in terms of those rules.
A point of order on you.
Councillor Alderman Smith, would you like to, would you like to withdraw your comment that you thought everybody knew Alderman Sutashi was stupid?
Madam Speaker. Speaker, I don't know how more explicit can I be? You heard the words come out of my mouth. I apologize for calling him stupid. I was, however, under a further...
Will you withdraw?
There was a general understanding as to his...
You see, Madam Speaker, he's still apologizing. Drooling.
Councillors, we are going to move on now. I'm going to now, just to calm you all down, I'm going to announce the numbers of councillors present. We have... We have thirty-seven, we have thirty-seven ANC counselors in the house. We have a hundred and twenty DA counselors in the house. We have two ARA counselors in the house. I'm talking, I'm talking. One does two. We have five. We have five ACDP counselors in the house. I'm going to ask you to leave if you don't keep quiet while I'm talking. Al Jamal, three. CCC, one. CMC, one. EFF, nine. Freedom Front Plus Four. Good, nine. PA, three. PAC, one. UDM, one. And that gives us a total of two hundred and thirty counselors in the house. That includes the banquet in hall. Thank you. Speaker. What is your point of order?
Speaker. Oh, Madam Speaker.
Speaker.
What is your point of order? Well, tell me what, in terms of which rule, what is your point of order?
You are not asking. One question to that savana.
Okay.
No, man. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker. My first point of order is on you. When we're raising a point of order, you can't threaten us by saying that you're going to take us out of this house. In fact, when I leave this house, I'd be behind Smith because he'd be in front of me, he's going to leave first. We're not going to allow you, Madam Speaker, to be biased here in this house. You must not ask JP Smith whether he wants to respond. When there's an order that has been called on him, he must apologize and withdraw his statement. He can't leave when he's closing, having closing sentiments of he thought that everyone knew that Alderman Sutasha is stupid. That's an inside and also that savana there on top, that is lying, lying, yes.
Counselors, okay, we're going to move forward now. Mr. Mayor, would you like to attempt to complete your answer to the question?
Speaker.
Okay.
Speaker, this is.
Sorry, Counselor.
Speaker, I could take a point of order. Bürgermeister hat gesagt, dass Johannesburg ein Regierungsbüro ist. Beispiel die Dianne Johannesburg. Ich will nicht an ihn nennen, Speaker. Das ist viel Partei-Regierung.
Ja, danke, das ist eigentlich, was er gesagt hat.
Danke.
Okay.
You must go back and check the recording, I said coalition government.
Ja, nee. Okay, Counselor Dambuzo, do you have a point of order because I want to move on? Because we haven't answered that question and your question's next if we can get to it.
No, Speaker. In. Speaker.
Yes, I'm listening.
Thank you. Through the process, you started bringing out the numbers of counselors that are here. And you did this in the process of the questioning. Now I need to respond to that now.
Okay, but that's not on the table now.
No, 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 Speaker. You gave incorrect numbers of the EFF.
So what is the number?
Through that process, you are the one who caused the process to incorrect. You named the numbers of the counselors that are in the house.
Counselor.
And you said the EFF is nine.
Counselor, can I explain how it works? They register at the table and nine have registered.
Then you should have not named incorrect numbers of the EFF.
Then you must please check that your counselors have registered.
A battalion of ten is here.
Well, I'm very pleased to hear that, thank you.
EFF Street, white flag.
This is the last point of order.
Speaker. Speaker.
Okay, Counselor.
Speaker. Umaya, Speaker. Umaya is.
Counselor.
Umaya is not responding very well in the.
He's trying to respond, but he keeps getting interjected.
No, 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 no. I'm saying that, did you manage to supply with the material in Langa?
That's another question. He hasn't finished answering Alderman Sutashi's question. And we have now run out of time for questions, but I will allow him to continue with this.
No, I would love to take these questions, Speaker, because these are, these are the crucial opportunity for the opposition parties to respond. And I don't mind the questions and the tougher the better. And let me say, if you are in a legislature, in elected office, you have to toughen up a little bit. You can't explode at every minor offense or statement or insult. Come on, I've been here, I've, I've been here for, I've been here for five minutes. You've been here for thirty years and I've got a thicker skin than you. You've got to toughen up, Alderman. Now let me just, let me just.
Counselors, whoops, can you please control your counselors? I know it's hard, but please. I know, I'll try and do that. Thank you.
Alderman.
Counselor Sutashi, please now.
Let me, let me.
I know, we've moved on now, we're already on the mayor's response.
You guys should go for dinner or something. Alderman, now let me continue with my civics lesson, please. You, the constitution in Schedule Four and Five gives local and provincial governments original powers. Powers which are not dependent on any other person or office bearer or legislature, but which are original to this legislature, to the people here. They cannot be taken away, they cannot be derogated, they cannot be abrogated, they are original. Now it is ludicrous, it is absolutely ludicrous to argue that where you have two different political parties or indeed coalition governments in power with two different policy agendas, two different manifestos, two different sets of electoral support, you describe them as one government. That is ludicrous, that is ludicrous. The reason, the reason, Alderman, why everywhere this party's in government is working and everywhere you're in government is a bankrupt shambles is because we have different governments.
Alderman Sutashi. Alderman Sutashi, you can go and get a declaratory order, but in the meantime, please be quiet and allow the mayor to continue.
Now, come on, now.
Allow him to continue.
Now, Alderman, you must, you must read the news. You must read the news. The crime stats that I, the crime stats I quoted are not, are not made up by us. These are not Cape Town crime stats. These are official SAPS crime stats that they only release once a year, by the way. And only in arrears, in retrospect. We would love for them to be much more accountable, transparent, live. But anyway, when we got them, this is what they said. Forty point five percent reduction in murder and attempted murder in Kryfentane. Twenty four point one percent in murder and attempted murder in Nyanga. Twenty one point one percent drop in murder and attempted murder in Kailicha. Fourteen and a half percent drop in murder and attempted murder in Harare. All areas where we've deployed. Now, now.
No mention of Hannover Park after.
Let me just finish with this, Alderman, let me finish with this.
I just killed.
The number, the number of SAPS offices that we have been deprived of, eight hundred and twenty-one. Again, that is exactly, that comes from the person that you have said is speaking against me now. That is from MEC Regan Allen. And what a great new MEC for community safety we have in the Western Cape. He reveals, he reveals, I'm just trying to find the numbers here. He reveals that SAPS promised us in their national budget, one thousand three hundred additional offices for Cape Town, which would have made your statement true for Western Cape, excuse me. I thought where the Western Cape ends at the, would have Cape Town. The, the, that would have made your statement true, but it is not true because actually when we look at the numbers of real deployment, it's eight hundred and twenty-one offices less than that. So it doesn't matter if you just put a number in the budget and say, look how much extra resources Cape Town is getting. What matters is the reality on the ground. And the reality on the ground, Alderman, is that if you are a resident in Grassy Park or Hannover Park or Bishop Blavers or anywhere of these other extremely violent parts of the city, you are chronically and unforgivably and criminally robbed of policing resources by the ANC National Government. That's the truth. That's the truth. Now, now, now that is the difference. That is why there can be no discussion of the idea of one government. There are many governments with different mandates and we're going to push ours as far as possible. But, well, my.
Counselor, you can put your questions in writing, but we're moving on. Mr. Mayor, are you finished responding to Alderman Sutashi?
I could go on all day, but I'll leave it at that.
Mayor, all right, come to your office. In the interest of being fair to those that were quiet, Counselor Marvin, your question. And then if we can get through that quietly and respectfully, we'll have a question for Counselor Dambuzo.
Madam Speaker, I think he's learned enough for one lecture. Next week we'll do some more.
Counselor Marvin, Counselor, can you all now please respectfully allow the Counselor to talk? Not today, not today.
No problem.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we welcome the efforts of the city in safety and security that are directed in fighting serious crime in our city. Yet Hannover Park and Mitchell's Plain and other areas are killing zones, Mr. Mayor, as we are speaking. As you've mentioned and we are well aware that SAPS has failed not just nationally, but in this province and in this city as well. Mr. Mayor, we continuously, when you speak on safety and security, we continuously hearing you speaking of our law enforcement officers and our LEAP officers. With all respect to them, we are grateful for them and they're doing a great job, Mr. Mayor. However, Mr. Mayor, how do we compensate when SAPS are not present? We never hear about Metropolis, yet we have, in our Metropolis department, Mr. Mayor, we have officers that has been constables for twenty years, Mr. Mayor. I've also learned recently, Mr. Mayor, and I'm speaking under correction because I heard from a source that we have one metro, we have one metro officer on patrol for an area as big as Mitchell's Plain, Mr. Mayor. So how are we going to compensate and how are we going to supplement our Metro Police Force, Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Speaker.
Thank you very much.
A point of clarity, Speaker. A point of clarity.
There's no clarity on that issue, that's a question to the mayor, the mayor can attend. No, you're not asking him for a point of clarity. Mr. Mayor, you can continue.
Am I allowed to, am I allowed to take the point of clarity, Madam Speaker? I'm happy to offer clarity.
Not on this issue, not on your address.
No, 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 Speaker, no, no, no.
All right, Counselor.
Okay, there's another lesson required. A point of clarity and the mayor will respond.
As many, as many opportunities that you give me to, to, to answer your questions, I'm happy to do so.
Thanks, thanks a lot about that. But order, order, order on you, Speaker. You are very patronizing, Speaker.
Yes, eh. Eh, 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 Mayor, I'm hearing here you have a lot of deliberations about your commitments regarding the issues of safety. And I've seen that you've tried to explain us about the mechanisms that have been used in terms of deployments and so on. I'm hearing I may have a big concern of the part of the installations of the CCTV cameras.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's not.
We are having all of these CCTV cameras.
That's another question.
Any effectiveness as far as trying to assist us in dealing with these of crime.
I assure you, Counselor, I will answer the question in detail, but in fairness, it is a new question, that is not a clarity.
It was part of your speech.
You didn't, but Counselor, you were not on the order table to make a question, okay? We're going to conclude with a response to Counselor Marvin and then Counselor Dambuzo will get a chance to, when he stops talking, to ask his question.
I can see how excited he is, he's gearing up for it. Counselor, thank you for your kind comments about LEAP and law enforcement doing a great job. I totally one hundred percent agree and endorse those statements. I also want to say that while it is absolutely true, and that I said that in my speech, that SAPS national management has failed, I want to give full honor and credit to hardworking, dedicated SAPS officers on the ground in Cape Town. Who are not, who are fighting a battle often with their hands tied behind their back because they don't have the resources, the staff numbers, the weapons, the armory, all of the equipment that they need to actually make an impact in the communities in which they work. But I don't for a second question their commitment and determination. I also want to say that we are, that is exactly what we are trying to do is to compensate where, where those SAPS numbers are feeling, falling desperately short, which is why we have done that LEAP deployment. And as I, as I've said, but it bears repeating often, that the initial results are extremely encouraging with those reductions in murder and violence. The only place in the country, the only metro rather, in the country where those numbers are going down and not up, that's very, very exciting. And we will continue to expand that as much as we possibly can. Resource dependent, of course, we have, we have three thousand officers compared to nineteen thousand, I think it is, that SAPS has got in the city. But we will continue to expand them and I'll tell you, I'm making a very strong case to the provincial government and to our excellent new MEC for community safety that LEAP has been shown to work in our most violent communities. Now is the time not to hit the pause button or put the car into neutral. It is the time to accelerate, to double down on that program, to commit more resources to it and really show that it is possible to turn the tide against crime in South Africa and that this is the, this is the only place doing it. So I hope that that message is favorably received by him and the Premier and I'll keep making it. And to the extent possible, to the extent that it's possible for us to match those resources, we are doing it. The Premier set us a challenge to say, can we match the LEAP spending rand for rand as a city? And I said, well, that's a big stretch target, but we'll see what we can do. The provincial government is spending about just shy of four hundred million rand on LEAP. If you look at your budget document, this year, we are increasing our number of law enforcement deployment and law enforcement auxiliaries by two hundred and thirty officers in one year. That is at a cost of more than two hundred and fifty million rand this year alone. So we are getting close to the point where we can match LEAP expenditure rand for rand with additional deployment in the city. So we are committed to that program, to expanding the resources, to spending more on the kind of tech interventions that make a real difference. And that will have benefits for exactly the problem that you speak of. The, the additional hundred and fifty offices that we are paying for this year alone are, I suppose I can use the word earmarked, particularly for Mitchell's Plain CBD, Belville CBD, those dangerous CBDs where commuters transit through every single day and where particularly petty crime, robbery, mugging is very, very rife. And you also get obviously the ever-present violence that one does get in those areas. So there is that expansion happening. Do you want to add anything to that? Covered?
No, sir, but just on the issue of the Metropolis. It is so that Metropolis, obviously not having grown significantly a number that many of the constables have been stagnant in the same rank for some time. This is something I've been trying to fix for a few years and the acting ED has now put a system in place that will do just that. So those constables will get an advancement that will translate into a visibly different designation, something they have been asking for a long time and which myself and some of the Metropolis leadership have been pushing for. So we have found a receptive ear and that is happening.
Okay, and I must say, we have great working relationships with station commanders on the ground in Cape Town and sector commanders and I speak to them regularly. Their feedback about the work that Metropolis and law enforcement and LEAP do is extraordinary, very positive. And often, often I get comments from officers on the ground who actually want to come and work in Metropolis and law enforcement because they see that that is where the moving and shaking is happening. And so the message must surely go out now with two hundred and thirty new positions coming in this budget that that opportunity is there. And obviously we want to fill those positions with the best crime fighting force that we possibly can. Okay, I think.
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Dambuzo's got a question. If you will indulge him, then we will allow him to have his question and continue overtime.
No, no.
Counselor Dambuzo?
I think time is up now, Speaker. Okay, okay.
Thank you very much, Speaker, and greetings to the mayor and the house. Firstly, I want to put out that the challenge that we would constantly have is the doming area approach of constantly having the two spheres or the three spheres, constantly blaming each other when it comes to the issues that needs to be resolved and the people of Cape Town be able to get what they necessarily need. I, I, I want to say, Mayor, the DA Counselor, that is from the banquetting hall, asking you a question pertaining as to what has been done for the people of Jozlov. The answer did not briefly bring an adequate response because the acting mayor at that period of time, which was MMC Badrudin, before Deputy Mayor came in after the Easter, had to leave bed paddling that community because of one major factor. When they had their burning down of their houses, all they asked for is fire kits. The issue of fire kit in the city of Cape Town is tormenting our people and it's a question that they are constantly asking. What is the city of Cape Town planning to do, as you have indicated on the issue of Jozlovo in your speech? And also, Mayor, I want that this house to not come out as if it's only acknowledging gift of the givers. Yes, we acknowledge the work that gift of the givers has done, but there were other that also placed their role in assisting there. Meals on Wheels was one of them and also others that also played a significant role there. So I think in the future, Mayor, when we are putting out there, indicate that there were also others that played a major role. And the nice part here, Mayor, is that when we were in Jozlovo, the deputy minister was there, the premier was there, the deputy mayor was there. All of them holding hands and speaking as one solid governance. And the people of Jozlovo in there asked one simple question after all the big English was spoken. What are we getting out of this? We had to explain and then the people left saying, so at the end of the day, everyone came here with cameras and were still not getting any assistance. So the people of Jozlovo and other informal settlements still feel and believe, Mayor, no assistance is coming from the city of Cape Town except having fire trucks stopping the fire. And at the end of the day, they still don't get anything from the city of Cape Town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. You are right to reprimand me for only recognizing gift of the givers. That is, that is of course absolutely true, that there are many organisations who do excellent work in those, in those areas of disasters and fires and so on. And you've mentioned another one of them, Meals on Wheels. And I'm sure that there are others as well and they're... I'm extremely grateful and I know the city is extremely grateful for the excellent work that they do and we acknowledge them. Let me say that it's absolutely not about different spheres of government blaming one another for, for these things, councillor. It is a simple point, this goes to my debate with Alderman Sotash here. It is a simple point of saying that if you want the best possible outcomes for the people who live in Cape Town and indeed anywhere in South Africa, can have the same debates about Johannesburg or Twane or anywhere. If, if our point of departure is a common desire, genuine desire to get the best possible outcomes, best possible prosperity and dignity for the people of Cape Town, then it goes without saying that the service should be delivered by that person who can do it best or that sphere of government who can do it best. I don't understand why there's any debate about that, frankly. Why should there be any debate? When we get into debate about that, what it shows me is that there's actually just territorialism. It's not about outcomes, it's about protecting, it's about protecting governance territory. And I think that's destructive for people. So if you say to me, you genuinely believe that people should be safer in Cape Town, I know that you and I agree on that, then it goes without saying that the city should absolutely be encouraged to expand its policing powers because we can deliver on that outcome. If you say that people should get to work on time and be connected with one another socially and economically and you care about unstitching the legacy of group areas, then it goes without saying that passenger rail should be devolved. If you argue against that, I must question your commitment to that outcome because that's just territorialism. So it's not about constantly blaming one another, it's just about making the obvious point about how to achieve the best possible outcomes for the people of South Africa and Cape Town. Now let me come on to the issue of fire kits. I did address this in an earlier speech, I think in January already, and I have followed up on that. Fire kits, the reconstruction kits were, they used to be funded by a national grant from, I think, the Department of Human Settlements. And that national grant was discontinued. For a year or two thereafter, the city continued to fund those fire reconstruction kits out of our own purse, but they became really prohibitively expensive. And it was not sustainable to, to, to fund those reconstruction kits without that, without that grant allocation. So what we have said is, Cape Tonians are extremely generous when it comes to fires. Well, tragedies in general, we saw that again with the KZN floods, even when it's not in our city. Cape Tonians open their hearts, their pockets, they go and they donate goods. I, I still think the, the fire department has probably still got water and chocolates and so on from the, from the fire on the mountain last year. So many, so much stuff was, was donated. What we need to do is make sure that that generosity is funnelled in a way that can be focused on victims of shack fires and not, not only mountain and brush fires. And mobilise that generosity in a way that people trust. And I understand, given what happens in South Africa, not that it happens here, but given what happens in South Africa, there's a very low level of trust towards governments and politicians in general. I can't, I, I hope to lessen that, that low level of trust or build that trust level over time in Cape Town. But what I said in January, I think it was, was that the city has got means at our disposal, like unused buildings and venues and so on, that we can use as collection points for donations of building materials, not just water and food, that skilled and crucially trusted NGOs can then use those distribution points to take charge of the distribution themselves. Because I never, ever wanted to be said that fire reconstruction kits are used for political gain in Cape Town. That must never, ever be the case. And so I have taken up that discussion again with gift of the givers, but that's not to say that it's, they're the only ones that can benefit from this. And our property management team is currently looking for a facility that is big enough, that can be used for this purpose. You will have seen that last week, we gave the CTICC down the road two, two gift of the givers to collect donations for KZN. I visited that facility probably an hour, no, maybe, maybe two hours after it opened. And already the donations were pouring in. Cape Tonians doing their absolute best again and showing, showing their generosity. The donations were pouring in. By the next day, that facility was nearly full and they were already trucking it to KZN. But the idea is exactly that, to identify a facility in the city that competent, trusted, neutral NGOs can come in and distribute building material for the purpose of reconstruction. And I think that that is a way that we can at least do something. Of course, it's not, it's not ever going to live up to, to providing a ready-made boxed reconstruction kit, which we are simply not able to do without the grant finance that we once received. But it does, at least it does something. It does something to help and it taps into this whole of society idea that I really think make Cape, makes Cape Town work so well in that the city offers something, the NGOs, neutral, trusted, apolitical NGOs offer something. And of course, it is driven by citizens opening their hearts and their pockets to donate to, to building reconstruction materials. That is what we can do and that is what we are doing. Thanks.
All right, thank you. That's the end of the question times. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Chief Whip? Acting Chief Whip, acting Chief Whip, without a speech. Can you now do the applications for LEAP?
Thank you, Speaker. The following councillors have been granted leave of absence. Councillor Haynes, councillor Marikani, councillor Majingo, councillor Donis, councillor Badrudin, Alderman Basson, councillor Boye, councillor Issa, councillor Farie, Alderman Nielsen, councillor Todor, councillor Visaki, councillor Woodman, councillor Lo, councillor Debea. The following councillors are on sick leave. Councillors Ma, councillor Tamu, councillor Basson, councillor Maabungani, councillor Elias, councillor Timlet and councillor Kuipman. The following councillors will be leaving early today. Councillor Andrews from 12 to 2, councillor Imso Alisa, councillor Ahmad, councillor Williams, councillor Lo. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. Councillor Makazi?
Thank you, Speaker. I'd like to add councillor Ngombolo. The leave form is in the chief whip's office, it was sent today.
All right, thank you. All right, then we're moving on.
Sorry, Speaker.
Councillor, councillor Dambuzo?
I just want to register that councillor Yeko will be leaving earlier.
Thank you. You need to notify the, the whip's office. Thank you.
Councillor Makungwa, I would like to apply to be released early at about one and a half past one.
Thank you, councillor, if you just notify the whip. Thank you.
Speaker, your numbers indicate there's only one CCC member here, our full complement of seven is here.
CCC, your full complement of seven is actually registered, thank you, I did mention that. And the other EFF councillor has registered, so we are now on 10 for the EFF as well. Thank you.
BA is full complement also, you said it's true.
I'm sorry, I can't see who's speaking. Oh, sorry councillor Sonoh, yes.
Yes, BA is full complement, you said it's true.
You've got four?
Yes.
Well, we've only got three registered, so please see which one hasn't got a sticker and they need to go sign in.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. All right, so let me move on to... Yes, councillor Harris.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. An apology secretly for councillor Donovan Nelson, thank you.
Thank you, it needs to go through the whip's office. Okay, announcements by the speaker, I don't have any other announcements. Announcements or official notices or urgent matters for the city manager?
None, Speaker.
None, thank you. Then we move on to the confirmation of the minutes and we will move on to page 6 and we will deal with pages 6 through to 12. Any comments? No, moving on from page 12 to page 25. Councillor Dambuzo? Okay, can you two councillors, Adams squared, can you please try and get on without disturbing each other? Thank you. All right, can we move on then from page 26 through to page 36?
Speaker?
Councillor Dambuzo, yes?
Yes, before the Adams squared...
Before we interrupted you?
Yes, I was going to speak on...
Okay.
We're on the minute, most.
Please.
There we go. I just want to register on page 8. There's absence with apology, councillor Yeko. Councillor Yeko was sitting right next to me in that council.
All right, we will go and have a look at the registration and correct the minute.
Yes, and also councillor Mazwi and me, their apology was submitted.
Yes, well, okay.
Sure.
So that one was admitted? And I don't see where councillor Yeko is written as being absent without apology. But we will, we will look at the minutes, at the registration and correct it.
Page 8 indicates that he was absent with apology. So I'm rectifying that position.
Oh, I see, all right. So in fact, he arrived.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, he arrived even before the meeting started, he was right next to me where councillor Jandela is sitting right now.
All right, thank you for that, we will, we will correct it. Are there any other corrections up to page 46?
Yes, please, Speaker. The minutes reflect that councillor Frenchman's absent without an apology. I did indeed apologise and I'll be off.
All right, we will correct that as well, we'll check it and correct it. Thank you very much.
Speaker?
Yes?
To your right. I note that I have submitted apologies for the last meeting, but I was able to attend and inform the whip's office that I was present and signed the register.
All right, thank you very much, we will correct that. Okay, moving on to the substance of the, the minutes. Can we move then through to pages 55? Through then on to the end, any other corrections? All right, councillors, if, if when you see the minutes, when you get the minutes and see that they are incorrect, please notify us so we can get them corrected for the meeting. Thank you very much. All right, then we move on to the next item. Before we do so, I just want to say that the following matters were agreed between the whips in volume 2A, item 6, 7, 8 and 9. In volume 2B, items 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 and 19. And in volume 3, item 24. In volume 4, items 29, 31, 34, 35 and 36, which are forenoting. And so we have now updated our councillor attendance and we have 205 in the chambers and backward in hall. All right, so we will move on now to the remainder of the agenda. And we move to item 4. And the speakers for item 4 are first councillor Ahmad from Aljazah.
Aljazah, our Aljazira, hey.
Sorry. Aljabar, Aljabar, yeah, I've been watching too much TV.
Thank you, Speaker.
Sorry, councillor.
Speaker, the above item wants us to approve additional funding, which is for a good project. Looking at Tom Tom's observation, Cape Town has been identified as the most congested city in South Africa. Congestion on our roads is indeed harmful to our environment as well as our economy. Our main objective is to alleviate congestion and address all major places. Speaker, my main concerns are, who's doing oversight over the poor quality of workmanship? Because we simply just pay for inadequate workmanship. Who's taking accountability for work that has to be duplicated? And who are those responsible for selecting the places of congestion? Speaker, as a layman, this report is racist. If you look at where the work has been done, it's really sickening. We still are constancy, Fizuk, Okaasewig, Durbanville, et cetera, et cetera. Does the colored and African people that have cars to travel, if any of those, these people that select the places points, ever travel from Mitchos Plain? Why a piece road, why a Welterfried and drive, why a Stramworth and roads? And so many other. Let us love by our ethos of the city of Cape Town, I so thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McQueenah?
No, it's a point of correction, councillor McQueenah, not McQueenah.
Councillor, thank you, you may talk, you may speak.
Oh, McQueenah. So it's councillor McQueenah. No, thanks, thanks, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think we, we partially agree with the motion on this item, but in fact, our communities, black communities in general and African communities in particular, due to the segregated residential and business area, which is a result of a group areas act, our areas are dormitories where we just sleep and we have to travel for kilometres to our working places. As it is the case with us here as councillors, we have to travel through traffic congestion from Kaile, Chakukuleto and all these black areas to come here. We are subjected to congestion in the morning as well as in the afternoon. We believe that these funds must be used to redress the injustices of the past. Yesterday, we celebrated 28 year, 28th anniversary of the Freedom Day. But this congestion, this congestion funds, fund reminds us... But this congestion, this congestion funds, fund reminds us of the harsh reality that really black men, you are on your own, more so in the Western Cape and city of Cape Town in particular. It reminds us of the past we wish to forget, where resources were allocated racially. As we can see that it is in the affluent or white-dominated areas where this fund is going to, is going to. And very few in the coloured areas and none whatsoever in the black communities. At least our fellow coloureds are enjoying a little bit of privilege as they did during apartheid times. We call, as we can see that there are funds that were allocated to just a few coloured areas. But dominantly, these funds are located to affluent areas. We call upon the fund to address having a bus lane on the N2 from Kailee Chakukule to address traffic congestion from Fuleni Mitchell's Plain, Kailee Chakukule and Dalft. We have asked for traffic lights in the Meway Road, Spine Road and Baden Powell. We see that this, we see that there are traffic lights in the Baden Powell Road. Maybe it is because there are a lot of white people who are using that Baden Powell Road. But there are no traffic lights in Meway and also Spine Road. So we do, Madam Speaker, support this item. But want to highlight this issue that it seems as if this money goes to these affluent areas, whereas there is traffic congestion as well in our communities, more especially African communities.
Thank you very much. Councillor Quintus?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, through you to the previous speakers, work has been done in the previous rollouts of our congestion programmes in various areas across the Cape, Cape Metropole. In fact, my colleague here next to me has confirmed that in her area, which could be classified as a former coloured group areas, work was in fact done and projects will be undertaken over the next four years across the city where needed. I'd also like to educate some of our councillors who may not actually know exactly how government works and the different spheres of government yet. But roads such as Spine Road and Baden Powell fall in fact under the provincial government. And we are in a process of trying to take over some of the roads by agreement from province that we can do things like put in traffic lights and manage those accordingly. The conversation is ongoing and Spine Road, which was mentioned, is in fact one of the top priorities for handover to the city of Cape Town. And good news is that traffic lights on Meway are coming very soon. And myself and the mayor will visit the site there as soon as Eskom is prepared to let us have the power lines to run those. So we are busy working on that and we will update in due course. So, Madam Speaker, before this august chamber is a recommendation for the approval to spend additional funding on the congestion programme of the city of Cape Town over the next four years. This critical programme aims to alleviate the most congested areas of our fair city and which is crucial for reaching many of our most pressing objectives, largely summarised as engineering a more livable city. Congestion relief speaks to improving green time, which is the time spent in movement, accessing opportunities, places of work, education, and lowering red time, which is the time spent standing still and going nowhere fast. Cape Town is a congested city, Madam Speaker, and is so for two primary reasons. The first is that this DA-run city has become a victim of its own success and the rapid urbanisation caused by the semigration of persons from other regions of the country who seek the manifold benefits of living in this well-run and opportunity city has seen more and more people and vehicles on our roads. The second reason, Madam Speaker, is due to the complete failure of our ANC national government to protect, maintain and run an efficient passenger rail service, which should be the backbone of the public transport system for any developed or developing city in the world. The shameful collapse of our once efficient, reliable and affordable rail service is yet another blight on our government nationally and its house of governance horrors and is de facto a crime against the poor and a large contributor to choked roads with standing vehicles, all of which are belching carbon emissions and adding to climate change. And our commuters are paying their heavy fuel prices and levies and taxi fares for the inconvenience. And that inconvenience comes with costs, Madam Speaker. It costs workers who arrive at their places of employment late. It costs learners and students who arrive late for their education. It costs businesses who cannot move goods in a tummy-ous and logistical manner. And it costs productivity and has a cost to our environment. Our congestion programme seeks to provide relief from these aforementioned costs, Madam Speaker, and are necessary, nay vital, in order for us to keep people moving and prevent the clogging up of our city's mobility cardiovascular system arteries. I therefore ask through you, Madam Speaker, that this wise council support the recommendations detailed in this report and approve the costs of this programme to be increased from seven hundred and fifty million rand to nine hundred and fifty-three point three million rand, excluding the seed funding of forty million over the next four financial years and it will form part of our urban mobility's capital expenditure programme. I thank you.
Thank you. The recommendations are on page one. Then can we all support the recommendations? Councillor Alderman Sotashi?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm rising in terms of rule thirty-two point one point one. I'm seeking clarity from the latter speaker. Can, I'm not sure whether it's Alderman or councillor. If I call you incorrectly, please bear with me. Can you share with us, councillor Quintus, since the inception of my city programme with the infrastructure, how much money national government has directed to the city of Cape Town? And how much money from the province and also our funding sources?
That's not a question for this particular item. No, you can put, no, it's not specific to this item that's on the agenda. So, so, but you're welcome to ask the question and he can respond when he has the opportunity.
Madam Speaker, it's a, it's a question that is directed to the infrastructure that he's talking about. Hence, I'm asking that question.
Yes, and councillor Bedela is in the committee, but that available, that information is available on all the committees' agendas. But if you want it specifically, councillor Quintus can come back to you, but at the moment, we're in the vote. Thank you. And councillor Makasi?
Thank you, Speaker. I think on instances like what Sotashie is asking, you should allow the Meiko member to say he's going to come back to Sotashie or give him a written response. He's not ready now or not, and not from the chair. You speak and answer on his behalf.
Okay, councillor, but the point is I was dealing with the point of order. But I understand what you're getting at. We're moving on. We're in a vote. You've got a point of order. What number? Councillor Bedela, your point of clarity?
Same, same, same order from Alderman Sotashie.
Okay.
Mine is simple, is simple, Madam Speaker. Because I heard in his assertion that the city of Cape Town is waiting for the Eskom in Meway. A Meway project is coming since twenty fourteen and every meeting I'm advocating for that one, including the other roads. But I've seen Eskom there last week. The carried seeking question is the electricity is not installed yet because I've seen Eskom there in Meway with the trucks. Because they said they are still waiting for Eskom, so I wanted to check if it's not.
So, so I'm not sure whether the councillor can respond to that.
Happily, Speaker, thank you. And through you to Alderman Sotashie. Thank you for the question. Alderman, I'm more than happy to request that my office draw up a comprehensive detailed expenditure, which you would, having been in council for as long as you have, should have had seen over the many decades that you've been here, councillor. But nonetheless, Alderman, nonetheless, we will, we will draw up that spreadsheet of where the funds have come from, how they've been dispensed, what is still coming and what we're planning on doing with it, and how we're really going to be using it to step into the breach created by the collapse of rail due to the theft caused by the party that governs us nationally. But you will get that. And then in terms of, there was a second item, oh, Meway. Yes, you're quite right. Eskom has been there. They have laid things, they've laid cables, they're getting everything ready. But they haven't switched on the supply yet. So we will do that hopefully in the next week or so. Thank you.
Okay, can you also give the council another copy of the Myffen report which was adopted previously at this council?
Yes, councillor Sotashie was part of that council then at the time of our recall.
Thank you. Then we, moving adoption of that recommendation. Thank you. Then we move on to item five. Councillor Mazwi? Yes, councillor Makasi?
Just before Mazwi, sorry to interrupt, can I request you that you get out of the transport portfolio? You are the speaker now. Thank you.
No, you see, once you're rolling, you're rolling. Okay, councillor Mazwi. But actually, that item was on the full council agenda, but I get your point. You don't want me to tell you. Okay, that's fine. Councillor Mazwi?
Thank you, thank you, Speaker. Greetings, Speaker.
Yes, we can hear you?
Press and the members of the community. Madam Speaker, water and sanitation is a major problem in the city of Cape Town. We see that in Kailee Chakukule, Danun, Dalft, Mfuleni, Phillipi and other black congested areas. EFF agrees that this is, this problem needs a special attention intervention that can help the residents of Cape Town genuinely. However, we also note that the SWAN is an international programme. Madam Speaker, the city of Cape Town is a very well-capacitated municipality. Why the outsourcing of this intervention? Why not investing in our country? EFF also note that the companies that partnered with the SWAN are of white supremacy. DA carries the mandate of white supremacy, making sure that we are always reminded of the apartheid. This approach is not accepted. Yes, it's not about carrying guns now, but making sure that the economy is in white capitalist hands. Madam Speaker, EFF is not a sangromatic, but we know the tendencies of DA-led government. With fine print and hidden costs of, and hidden costs, our people will end up paying huge bills. It might not be now, but we know that it will come and bite the poorest of the poor. Our speaker is to make sure that we secure the future of a black child. Be it that so, EFF reject the item. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gunki?
Giga councillors? Greetings and officials. The item before us, recommendations by the mayor, request for membership by water and sanitation directorate of the Smart Water Networks Forum. This membership must not only be of high, high value to the directorate, but able to share the living conditions of the people of Kailee Chakukule and other townships under the spillages that the city of Cape Town is not able to detect in time. It must not be above the city's logo to appear on the SWAN website and annual membership directorate. It must be how to reduce wastewater-intensive industries, agriculture manufacturing, manufacturing or power production use of high volume. Product, product, production of use, of use of high volume. Seventy percent of all water consumption. The same sector is liable for wasting approximately sixty percent of that water according to UNs, Food and Agriculture Organisation. To, to reduce water consumption per capita by ten percent, reduce leakage by twenty percent, reduce billings accordingly, predict potential failures and diminish the maintenance cost. Technology, it inhales sensors and IoT technology for real-time monitoring and control can help monitor and prevent pollution and even water quality. Lastly, we will support the item, but we will request the directorate to give us a report quarterly about this membership. Speaker, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Davids?
It's just about, good afternoon to everyone. So it's about getting a membership to SWAN, which is a smart water networks forum. The first thing is what is the smart water network? Smart water solutions improve the use of utilities' physical assets by better measuring and acting upon network events. It has a layered view. Smart water solutions improve the efficiency, longevity and reliability of utility underlying its physical assets by better measuring, collecting, analysing and acting upon a wide range of network events. This impacts all aspects of utility, including daily operations, maintenance and network planning. With such knowledge, utilities can accurately set goals, plan investments, address challenges like leakage, inefficiency, regulatory compliance and customer service. So the SWAN network is a wide, worldwide industry forum promoting the use of data technologies in water, wastewater and stormwater networks, making them smarter, more efficient and sustainable. SWAN brings about industry leaders together to promote awareness, effectiveness and the use of smart, smart data systems for network forums. It raises awareness for smart water networks, creates and reports upon methodologies, standard performance indicators and best practice. In this way, we develop new approaches and solutions to improve network operations, share members' experience, case studies and research, and we promote interoperability, synergy and common measurements. They, they specialise in a huge amount of different things, but the most things that's going to be of use to a city is accurately measure water usage electronically, receive yield time data, detect leaks and identify wastage and theft. And to assist the city with this and other water and sewer challenges, it's best to align ourselves with industry best practices. The question is why SWAN? So SWAN is an NGO and it's independent forum that is focused on smart water for clean sewer and stormwater only. They share technical detail and lessons learned from utilities. In terms of this, with a cost of less than thirty thousand rand per year, which you budgeted funds already available across all three years, the city of Cape Town will become part of the utilities and regulatory tier, joining cities such as Sydney, Vancouver, Stockholm and Los Angeles. And I highly recommend that the city applies for membership and we urge everyone to visit SWAN's website and forums. I thank you.
Thank you, councillors. We have, we have a recommendation on page fifteen. The EFF has indicated they do not support. Are there any other parties that wish to indicate they don't support the item? Can we move the recommendation with the EFF's vote against? Thank you. We do so. That moves us on, councillors, to item ten. And the first speaker there is councillor Boye.
Good day, Speaker. Am I audible?
You're audible, but your leader is chatting in your time. Okay, carry on councillor Boye.
Good day, Speaker and colleagues. Speaker, the EFF is not in support of the said by law. The EFF, the EFF is very clear in its founding manifesto that the state should, through the state housing, construction company, improve the quality and size of low-cost houses. The state should further regulate housing finance through providing housing finance. That doesn't exceed a period of ten years. Integrate human settlement should in the real sense be definite of all settlements led by the state with guaranteed bulk service such as water, water provisions, electricity, sewerage, sewage system and more. Why must the city of Cape Town have private companies building the state houses? We have all of us seen how the privatising living poor of, living, living all of, we have all of us seen how privatising, privatisation living poor communities, even poor, tend us being awarded through a circle of friends and families and in most cases resulting in incomplete projects. Speaker, the timeframe for the public participants was during Covid nineteen. Halls were closed and our people have no access of emails and websites resources, meaning that this was not full participation of those who are affected the most by such by law. Therefore, EFF doesn't support this by law. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gabusa?
Thank you, Speaker, very much. Speaker, we are still celebrating twenty-eight years. Speaker, we are still celebrating twenty-eight years in our democracy. The road speaker or the journey was not easy because the blood was fallen during the apartheid regime for the innocent people. Some of them were tortured to death, Speaker. Chris Wane was one, was brutally killed by the government of apartheid regime, including Solomond Masangu and Steve Baker. We are enjoying the fruit of this freedom, but DA were never part of this freedom. It was a painful moment. Some of you were beneficiaries of this apartheid regime. You sold us because DA was the born child of the National Party. Nelson Mandela played a very important role and many others to defeat this apartheid regime. We support the item, but the special planning law must be reviewed each and every five years, like ITP. We don't support old apartheid regime of special planning. The special planning must be, must talks to the needs of our people. The comments from public participation must be considered and recommended, thank you.
Thank you. Elderman Nivot?
Speaker?
No, we're going to be polite and respectful and allow the elderman to speak.
Bye, thank you Speaker. For your good health. Caupsetse municipal planning and ground gebruik bestir verordening is een van de meest grond liggende raamwerken voor besluit neeming voor die toekomst van ons staat. En die verslag voor ons vandaag is de eerste volledige herschinning van die verordening wat in tweeduizend in werking getred. Speaker, ons kan niet die verandering bespreek of nou weer besin zonder om erkennings te geven aan die richtinggevende leiderschap van Raadsheer de Jaspersen en Almira wat die meer met ons is niet, als ook Raadsheer Watkin en Raadsheer Draymond. Gesteld door die bekomen technische raadgeving in onderleiding van directeur Cheryl Walters en Alice Pan. Ik wou vandaag zeggen dat Caupsetse is gezien met bijzonder ze hoe professionele dienstlevering van het iedere departement. Daarom wordt ons verordening als voorbeeld voorgehouden dieert alle andere miskaliteiten in en om ons provincie.
Elderman, can you wait while the interpreter catches up? Thank you. Speaker, carry on, thank you elderman.
Speaker, met de herschinning van de MBL verordening heeft ons de fenomenale geleendheid om de ruimtelijke anslag van de statte veranderd zodat weggedoen kan worden met de apartheidlineaire steedelijke vorm wat traditioneel scheiding brengt tussen gemeenschappen. Speaker, ons heeft nou de geleendheid om met die besluit neemingsinstrument Caupsetse ruimtelijke vorm te omschepen in een stad van economisch volhouwbaar polycentrische gebieden waar werks en zaken geleend werden plaatselijk aan gemeenschappen gebied wordt, nader aan woninggebieden. Verder die tel van die zoiets waarom ons wil doen wordt in die verslag vervat.
All right, thank you elderman. The interpreter hasn't caught up yet, if you can just allow him to carry on. Sorry, just let the gentleman finish. Yes, I've already said that, moving on. The interpreter, you're supposed to be interpreting in English. Okay, so can you do the next lot in English?
Speaker, do you want me to continue in English?
I would be very much appreciated if you do that. Thank you.
Speaker, part of our reviewing of this bylaw is to illustrate our commitment to social justice and also social spatial redevelopment. A lot of our political colleagues give very high up that they part and parcel of promoting spatial injustice or the reviewing thereof, but there's no real answer. The silent problem that nobody addresses is the absence of land use rights management within all our communities. With this review, we afford everybody the opportunity to bring their solution to the table so that we as a city with our diverse communities can go forth into a spatial framework where we have reliant, affordable, close-to-home work opportunities so that we don't need this extensive road and expensive travelling cost afford to some of the communities in order to keep to job creation or a job opportunities. With this motivation, I'm very sure that we can rely with on all councillors to have a very heavy input into the possibility on how to manage land use rights in future, to have a new Cape Town form which allow each and everybody of us to have an opportunity close to home or home close to opportunity. Therefore, I ask that everybody support the next phase of the reviewing of the bylaw by supporting the recommendation as put forward to us by the mayor and the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, we have a recommendation. The EFF have indicated they do not support it. Are we, it's on the booklet on pages three to five. Can we adopt the recommendation with EFF's vote against? Thank you, then we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor? The entire purpose of this policy amendment is to drive inner-city densification, more affordable housing for all Capitonians so that we can begin to meaningfully undo the legacy of group areas. I really look forward to the record showing that the EFF voted against that.
Thank you very much. That concludes volume two A and we're moving on to volume two B. Item eleven, the first speaker is councillor Jacobson. So these items are going to be clustered together, items eleven to nineteen for debate purposes, but they will be voted on individually. So when you speak to these items, you're actually speaking to all of them. Councillor Jacobson, are you ready?
I am.
Thank you, you may start.
Honorable Speaker, I love Spur Burgers. Since a young boy, I've been going to the Spurs, what an exemplary restaurant. However, on occasion, I've been there, in fact, once where I went and I received not a full plate of burger. In fact, it came without my chips and my onions. And the honorable manager made the right thing and he said, "God, you've got a choice. Either you get a discount on your meal or we can provide you with a full plate." Last month, the honorable mayor asked the citizens of Cape Town to embark on a campaign of cleaning streets and solid waste, which we gladly assisted. However, I must advise that we expected that our rates would cover the service, but we gladly did the job and we're hoping that our rate payers will then get a discount on this issue. I also note, and I'm a little concerned, that safety and security maybe not have, do not have the ability or the will or the manpower to deal with law enforcement matters. And the honorable mayor and JP's office has asked us to embark on some community initiatives to assist. I assume there we'd also get a discount on those rates as well. But of great concern is that we don't have the actual ability. We're not professional enough to deal with these matters. But, and I hope the community at large don't see this as a call for vigilante acts, but what I'm understanding from the mayor is he talking about the responsible acts of initiative, neighbourhood watchers and the roll-out of SIDS.
Conclude please.
We have forty-six SIDS in the city of Cape Town, the largest being the Fortrecker Corridor SID, an absolutely outstanding operator. They've been doing this almost alone for the last ten years. And if it wasn't for them, Bellevue Power Area would be a complete disaster today. The companies like Sunlam and Foshini would have left long time ago.
Your time is up.
I've got three minutes with respect. If it wasn't for a company like this SID, Bellevue today would be a complete collapse. We're going into a futuristic city for the city of Cape Town and I highly recommend that this contract be extended, but they cannot do it alone without the services of the city of Cape Town. I know I had a bit of fun with this item referring it to a burger etcetera, but with respect, you cannot offer us a half a burger and charge us the full price. Or alternatively, you work strongly with our SID and give the full service, then we can really make Bellevue into a futuristic city. I understand the city has got lots of money and that's a count probably about ten billion after twenty billion and they've committed to ten billion. There should be no reason why we should not be able to support further patrols and make Bellevue a proper futuristic city. The question, the item was very clever. Should we be supporting SID Fortrecker Corridor? Absolutely yes, and it's an outstanding beacon of hope for the community of Bellevue. And all we're asking is that the city assists further with Derek Block and his good committee there in making Bellevue a proper, proper city to reckon with. Thank you for indulging, I'm very hungry now after talking burgers.
Must be scrapped also. Thank you. Councillor Mabiza? Councillor Mabiza?
Councillor Mabiza, Speaker. Greetings Speaker in the House. Councillor Mabiza, not Mabiza.
Oh, thank you.
Speaker, as an ANC, we support the extension of the Beacon Valley and other and improve this district. But we are saying as an ANC, it should be the last extension so that, so that it should be the last, the last extension so that it can able to, so that it can able to, so that it can able to give another district, district an opportunity. Because if we can only give this Beacon Valley and others not looking and extending it to Mitchas Plain and Kailijah and others, it don't be fair. Most of the services that the Beacon Valley and those angels are getting, we are looking forward to get them in other districts, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Clenshaw. M. Clenshaw. Mercer?
Thank you Speaker. Speaker, my contribution today is in favour of this recommendation of the extension of the special rated area for the Bellevue Improvement District to twenty twenty-seven. Colleagues, as a sub-council, we are always very excited in partnerships like these where communities and businesses contribute to the building and improvement of Bellevue and other areas where we have SIDS. This means over and above what the city of Cape Town does as its mandate of delivering services. This initiative tops up these services by paying for it themselves. Over the years, we have seen the benefits of the SIDS in our different areas in Cape Town where communities and businesses has put in their own money, noting that they still have the responsibility to pay the normal rates. Speaker, I'm further encouraged that this partnership in the Bellevue area in particular will contribute to the future focus in rebuilding Bellevue. The item is about communities and businesses not only expecting government to do things for them, but how they can assist themselves in having a better environment and atmosphere to live in. Speaker, through you councillor Jacobson, please need to start working in communities and not be a social media councillor. I thank you Speaker and we support the item, thank you.
Now we're going to vote on them separately, item eleven, do we all support the recommendation? Page six, thank you. Item twelve?
Speaker? Speaker?
PA does not support. PA does not support, councillor EFF?
The EFF does not support.
The EFF does not support. Are there any other parties that don't support?
PAC does not support.
What party are you?
EFF does not support.
Yes, we've just heard that. Can you, okay, thank you. Are there any other parties that don't support?
We've recorded the Penaffness Congress.
I'm afraid I can't hear you.
PAC.
PAC, PAC doesn't support, all right. Then we move the recommendation noting those that are voting against, thank you. Does that apply to all three items, all of the items? Now we do item twelve.
From eleven to nineteen.
It's all of them, so we'll do the same, okay, so we'll.
Including the EFF.
Including the EFF and.
All of them.
All of them, all right. So item twelve then, the recommendation on page seven is carried, noting those three against. Item thirteen, the recommendation on page eight, we're all in favour, but note the three that are against. Item fourteen, the recommendations on page nine, can we move that recommendation with the same conditions? Thank you. Item fifteen, the recommendation on page ten, we move the recommendations noting the three against. Item sixteen, the recommendations on page eleven, we move the recommendations noting the three parties against. Items.
And there are two other speakers still on this cluster group. There's councillor Mabiza and councillor Lansdowne.
Councillor Mabiza has already spoken.
Oh, councillor Lansdowne?
Lansdowne, sorry, hasn't spoken. Do we need to give councillor Lansdowne an opportunity?
I think so, he's prepared.
We are in the voting process, I think we've reached a kind of consensus, we can move. All right, I apologize, so I'm going to move. Okay, we're going to move, we're on item seventeen, which we've approved with the three against. Item eighteen, we've approved with the three parties against. And item nineteen, we've approved with the three parties against. Councillor Lansdowne, I apologize for overlooking you on the speakers list, but in the interest of moving forward and making up some time, we're going to move then on to the next item, which is item twenty. Can we then, just have a look here? All right, councillor Mayor?
I'm sure that if those three parties had heard councillor Lansdowne, they would have voted in favour of the item.
I'm not so sure, but we've moved on, okay? Item twenty, councillor Murray. Freedom Front Plus.
Thank you. Thank you, madam speaker.
We can hear you, carry on, thank you.
Madam speaker, access to clean water is the foundation of our freedom and our right to life. The Water Services Development Plan gives priority to some of the many pressing issues that have been unaddressed by the previous administration. It cannot be business as usual. The increased number of key performance indicators are impressive and important. But all these KPIs are not the ultimate standard nor target. The constitution sets the ultimate standard and the target to assess the overall success of the city and this government. Everyone, as the constitution says, has a right to an environment that is not harmful to their health or wellbeing. The constant sewer spills and pollution of our flays and wetlands and rivers must end in order to meet this constitutional standard. The upgrading of the water infrastructure in informal settlements should include the removal of structures built on sewer manholes. We need greater collaboration from the human settlements directorate to ensure better living conditions for these families. Therefore, directorates cannot operate in silos. I'm satisfied that the mayor's priority programme is addressing many of these issues included in this plan and the measures taken to safeguard our vulnerable infrastructure and employees of the city. In closing, we support this item, but I want to mention the timiest and successful implementation of this plan is foundational and fundamental to the achievement of freedom for all our residents. This plan dare not fail. Or the city will ultimately.
Thank you councillor.
Be held responsible for failing the constitutional standard. Thank you.
Councillor Maswi? Councillors, can you all please be respectful of the speaker when the speaker comes? Councillor Maswi?
Thank you, madam speaker.
All right, we can hear you, thank you.
EFF notes the Water Services Development Plan financial year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. However, we do not want the beautiful picture in the paper. We want service for our people. Madam speaker, the reality and the fact is that our areas, I mean the poor communities, where I am not only raised but purely battered as well, are in a very bad situation. We breathe sewer every day and it's out of hand. We hope that these finances will prioritize informal settlements. And madam speaker, EFF would like to point it out that it is very useless to give people services with no plan. The city that deemed to be caring, to be a caring city, we hope it's caring. This term will not be selective. Have a proper plan for informal settlement, not just to do a by-the-way project that leads to more damages and more of in union that are out of hand, causing unnecessary conflict in our communities where they blame each other on how we live. What do you call it when installing a tap without a drainage system? Madam speaker, can the people be respected? The timeframe is very important as well, madam speaker. Lastly, please take priorities of the aging infrastructure and it is causing more damages. Madam speaker, EFF agree with the recommendation. However, we want you to note the concerns mentioned above. Thank you, madam speaker.
Thank you councillor, councillor Gungu.
Speaker, the item before us, Water Services Development Plan. The actual delivery of the water and sanitation services in accordance with the constitution is the responsibility of local government, which is the city of Cape Town municipality under the administration. The legislation that regulates us in the city, in the city, water and sanitation services in South Africa irrespective of whether the service is provided to a household, school, student, residence, clinic, hospital or community site are the Water Services Act, WSA Act one oh eight of nineteen ninety-seven. The Water Services Development Plan must take into cognizance the norms and standards for levels of water services, particularly draw on the principles of universal access, human dignity, user participation, service standards, redress and value for money. The principles of sustainability, affordability, those who can't pay must have water equally to those who can afford. Effectiveness, efficiency and appropriateness should always be kept as uppermost in supplying water to communities, even to those that are not in your constituency as DA. The Constitution of South Africa says that everyone has a right to have access to sufficient quality water. Everyone has a right basic water supply. Every water services authority must in its Water Services Development Plan provide for measures to realize these rights. Therefore, speaker, the plan in itself, it's a good plan in paper. But as the ANC will monitor the plan for its implementation up to the latter. This is a good plan, we support as the ANC because it address all the issues that needs to be attended as a municipality. Thank you, speaker.
Thank you, councillor Nikki Riada.
Thank you, madam speaker. Today we table before you the Water Services Development Plan for our financial years twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-six, twenty-seven. Chapter one, point two C of the Water Services Act states that all water authorities need to have a Water Services Development Plan. This is a statutory plan, also known as a water sector plan, and it forms part of our IDP, which is set out for five years and is reviewed every year. This sector plan is guided by the city of Cape Town's innovative and forward-thinking water strategy. Whilst some municipalities remain focused on the here and now and some councillors and parties prefer to look backwards, the city of Cape Town knows the importance of planning and moving forward. We need to look at water differently from before. The drought has taught us a lot and whilst much planning and action was taken before the drought to bring the city to a point where we know that our water future is secure, there is still much to be done. We need to see water as a finite resource. As we say in our strategy, there is no wastewater, only wasted water. This plan, which is led by our strategy, includes an outline of our current status of services, infrastructure and makes proposals for particular projects. This draft document was compiled with the input of several internal and external departments and role players. Section fourteen, one B of the Water Services Act requires this document to go out for public participation. Our public participation period was from the twenty-sixth of October twenty-one to twenty-sixth November twenty-one. The Water Sector Plan went out alongside our Integrated Waste Management Plan because within this directorate and within this city, we take an integrated approach to matters. On pages nine hundred and forty-eight to nine fifty-six, you will find a detailed breakdown of all the comments received from the public participation process. We received thirty-seven comments in total, providing input from residents, rate payers associations, nonprofit organizations, members of parliament, property developers, provincial and environmental departments and more. After our public participation process, all the comments were considered and the necessary changes were made to the WSTP. It's not surprising that the city of Cape Town is seeing an ever-increasing number of households flocking to its two thousand four hundred and forty-six square kilometers. In twenty nineteen, Cape Town had an estimated population density of a thousand eight hundred people per square kilometer. Therefore, this document is incredibly important to ensure that we not only plan the maintenance and upgrade of infrastructure to carry the increase in population, but to ensure that we minimize our impact on the environment and increasingly more important, our water resource scarcity, all this while still ensuring economic growth. The aim is to increase our reliability on alternative water sources such as groundwater, wastewater reuse and desalination by three hundred million liters per day. Our Water Sector Plan commits to providing safe access to water and sanitation, the wise use of water, ensuring there is sufficient and reliable water from various sources and that we remain a water-sensitive city. We have many challenges that we face and one of our challenges is aging infrastructure for bulk and reticulation services, which has now taken a far higher priority. Our mayor has ensured that we are focused and the directorate has therefore already set aside over a hundred million in this current financial year to replace aging water pipeline infrastructure. We have over ten thousand kilometers of water mains in our city, so increasing the replacement of the aging infrastructure is of vital importance. Where we were replacing about twenty-eight thousand meters of pipeline, our target is now fifty thousand of meters of pipeline for this financial year alone. So we're also increasing our sewer pipe replacement from twenty-five kilometers a year to a hundred kilometers per year in this coming financial year. Our wastewater treatment capacity across the city has also been a challenge and is being addressed through various plant upgrades amounting to over three point three billion rand investment. And these will continue until we have more than sufficient capacity. Our rivers and other water bodies are suffering a significant amount of pollution from various sources and the dumping into our sewer and stormwater systems is creating strain on our resources and our systems. We have therefore set aside fifty-seven point eight million rand for infrastructure upgrades directly linked to the flare rehabilitation. This plan therefore assists us to face these challenges head-on and sets out where we currently are, where we want to be and what we need to do in order to get there. The directorate's vision is to ensure that Cape Town will be a water-sensitive city that optimizes and integrates the management of water resources to improve resilience, competitiveness and livability for the prosperity of its people by twenty forty. What you have before you is the final draft for approval by council with the public comments and input included and is based on audited information as of thirty June twenty-one. This draft has gone back to our Growth Management Working Committee to ensure that it is aligned. And I therefore move that this Water Development Services Plan be accepted and adopted by council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Punt. Anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, speaker. Speaker, if we look at this plan and I note that all parties agree on it, even the EFF and normally they get an triple F for in class. But speaker, due to all this, I just want to state another thing. We also must look at when the Water Service Development Plan is there, it also is aligned with the IDP and also aligned with the municipal spatial framework and resilience strategy, the climate change strategy, the human settlement strategy, the environmental strategy. And also it underpins the policies and the bylaws of the city of Cape Town on water. Madam speaker, and I personally think the ANC, if they take note, I know they saw this plan as a great plan as already said and indicated. I actually want them just to take this plan to the other municipalities that is under ANC control, that is a total flop in this country. Madam speaker, this is an example. This is an example of how a city puts a plan together for a water strategy. And madam speaker, to put on this, here you can see why the city have qualified people and not, and not cater deployment in their system. And councillor Tasi, maybe your degree that you earned have that moral in it about how you can get out corruptions out of the system. And madam, madam speaker, to go, to go back to the Water Service Development Plan, I just want to raise with councillor Murray, talking about issues, pressing issues, and they refers to flays and sewer spills and the freedom constitution duty.
Conclude, please.
Madam speaker, all that is in this plan. You can just go to the hundred twenty-four pages of this plan. Madam speaker, with this, I move the item. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a recommendation on page fifteen. I've seen the EFF support it, the ANC support it. Are there any parties that are not supporting it?
Who's not supporting, speaker?
PA support.
PA support, thank you. Then can I move the recommendation? Thank you. It appears to be unanimous. Moving on then, we conclude volume two B and we move on to volume two C, item twenty A. And we have, when I catch up, we have councillor Butte Rousseau.
Thank you, speaker. Speaker, um, that uns that cup that, uh, uh, Brazil and a tough and tasty to beat. So understand it, especially all the rats that fun Brazil and talk new. Rishal, Rebecca, what the house is for nonsense, what in the cholera I asked. Uh, I will need, uh, welcome, Rishal. I will need no speaker that either the best of height, but success for best deal world. Much for on the planet, on for China, it goes in, be there to necessarily make. Court mine, skull facility, they were at bank on big. It's not, we, 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 the financial last night, of hanging from who did best to her board. So long the renter of the court term one facility type, what need dear warburg facility type speaker is need. Need the veranda, where the kite from in winners from start cap start working. Understand, fear, rest, the under fear lines, Swiss, what support of lots of five paragraph five on volume three, yes, yeah. Thank you, speaker.
Thank you. Do we need that translated into English? Mister interpreter? Please.
Ask clarity, I just want to be certain what has changed, madam speaker, that the interpreters are sitting here.
Yes, I'll tell you what changed because I was also concerned about it. But if the interpreters are upstairs and they do simultaneous interpretations, they can't hear it in the banquet in hall. That's the problem. Hopefully we get back all together at the next meeting or, you know, we solve that problem. Okay, Mister interpreter, when you're ready?
It all depends, speaker, as to how this money will then be used. It's. Sorry, 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 Cheperson. You know, Cheperson, my mind is now, is now set up in easy course because as in do Lulo, easy, I need a in class on gas, so I understand here the recommendation. Google, get set up, yeah, I'm a poconai corner, I love it, it's close in, but Uti and I as in do Lulo, it's Koyo, Uya's it casa, Coco's casa. He chose Leon, Coco's casa. And what he is actually referring that they are actually, uh, they agree with the recommendations. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome to the colleague in the gallery, councillor Chunchi.
Hello? Can you hear me? Am I audible down there?
Yes, you're audible, you may continue.
Okay. Speaker, while it is expected that an institution such as a municipality work with a banker, it doesn't take away from the fact that everything is quantifiable. The EFF advises that the figures given here should have strict measures that accompany them to assist those who are easily swayed from following processes relating to monetary issues which inevitably lead to wasteful, fruitless and irregular expenditures only to blame the malfunctions of the system, be it email, SAP or any other application which permits ill-discipline and questionable human behavior of alleged double dippers of sorts in the name of service delivery. The process of signing monies to beneficiaries has to be monitored, especially when it comes to extending. way the EFF is very much against, using even more money due to system flexibilities and less rigidity of systems. Compliance must be observed from the first letter of the bidder's contractual agreement to the very last letter of the signatory signatures, who have authority to request and release funds at their disposal. There must be stringent policies which marry into this contract to minimise unforeseen misuse of taxpayers' monies. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much, councillor Alderman Moody.
Good day, Madam Speaker. What we're dealing with is short-term facilities for the city of Cape Town. I think the previous speaker could take that debate in terms of our monitoring, supply chain management, et cetera. Speaker, Nedbank has completed its annual assessment of the city of Cape Town based on the city's annual report and transactional profile. This includes a credit risk assessment in which Nedbank has assessed the city in a positive light and has provided the following banking facilities for the 2022-23 financial year. Madam Speaker, I've got some other chorus somewhere along the line from EFF. The following facilities, the general banking facility, which is an overdraft facility of 800 million, guarantee facility cash covered, where we supply the guarantees of 150 million, guarantee facility non-cash covered, covered by the bank, is 30 billion, business travel card, that's your monthly limit of 2 billion, forward exchange control, 74 billion, sorry, million, letter of credit, 16 million. All costs associated with these facilities have been approved through a tender process completed in 2018, in which Nedbank was appointed the city's main banker. This tender also served before council in terms of section 33 report. The above-mentioned assessment follows a recent credit opinion publication by Moody's Investment Service. I was almost going to say Moody's to take the gap there, but it is Moody's Investment Service, which has affirmed the city's rating and improved its outlook from negative to stable. All facilities have remained unchanged since the previous review in April 2021, despite the challenging economic conditions. I therefore recommend that in terms of section 45.2A of the MFMA, the short-term debt facilities for the period 1st of July 2022 to 31st March 2023 be approved and that the city manager or his delegated authority be authorised to reallocate from the general banking facility towards the different categories mentioned earlier. I move the recommendation as listed on page 142. Just a correction, Madam Speaker, when I did mention the 2 billion, it's actually 2 million, I beg your pardon on that. I thought I did the zoom out thing there.
Thank you very much. We have a recommendation on page 142. Can we move the recommendation? Thank you. Then we move on to item 20B. The first speaker there is councillor Sampson.
As clear right now, the previous speaker. You did register as proper.
Yes. Councillor Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the 10th of January 2022, I visited the East Street Clinic and met with a clinic manager who emphasised the life-saving services that this facility and many others such as this facility renders to our communities, such as HIV AIDS, the treatment for TB and postnatal services to mothers and babies, just to mention a few. The clinic manager also reiterated the fact that due to COVID and its protocol, numbers was reduced of patients visiting the facility, but under normal circumstances, this facility and others are very busy with not enough staff to handle the number of patients visiting on a daily basis. This specific clinic in East Street is central to not just the people of Mitchell's Plain, but also for surrounding areas. Therefore, the closing of any yard facility is and should not be allowed under any circumstances as our yard system is already under strain nationally, provincially and local. However, it is welcome to note in the item C20B, volume 2, page 37, that it has been proposed that the Alsis River, Maitland, North Pine, East Street and Rocklands will not be closed. So, Madam Speaker, we are happy that that has been proposed. However, no other facilities should be closed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Markroft?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, everybody. Madam Speaker, good hereby wish to express our support to this item based on the content. As good, we took a firm stand against the closing of clinics with the help of legal petition process. Good hereby acknowledge and thank the 6,000 residents of Mitchell's Plain for standing with good and for placing the trust in us, a stand with them in addressing the closure of the facilities. The decision previously had direct impact on the most vulnerable and underprivileged residents, who really depend on the healthcare services, which is a very critical part of society at all, for all, I beg your pardon. Speaker, there is good in the governing administration. We thank Miko member councillor Patricia van der Ros with a good heart for listening to the residents of good. Speaker, waking up early in the morning, engaging with our community, listening and understanding their needs and what their challenges are, is what service delivery include. To do good is to be available and provide good service to all. Madam Speaker, we are concerned however, not that not all areas are included, namely places like Kailicha and Outbay amongst others, who face the same challenges and hereby request Miko member councillor Patricia van der Ros to find it in a good heart, here hard to stop the closure of Kailicha clinics and assist in opening the clinic of Outbay, where the elderly need to travel currently for health assistance. In conclusion, Madam Speaker, this victory for good need to send a clear message to the city of Cape Town, DLD government. It is no longer business as usual and you will be held accountable through our oversight capacity as a good movement. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, councillor Fulhun.
Good morning, Speaker. This report seeks to review and amend the council resolutions, specifically recommendations insofar as it pertains to original decision on the mothballing of the nine smaller health facilities. In the interim, Newlands and Honeyside Satellite Clinics were closed soon after the resolution has been passed. They were unsustainable, given that they were only operation once a week. As a caring Miko member, councillor van der Ros went out to the communities and she did on-hand experience and spoke to the residents in the area. This includes the public transport and the reality of low intensity wards between areas controlled by different gangs, as well as the impact on the service accessibility to our communities. Therefore, it recommended, in the recommendation, in council resolution C19A0121, be reviewed and amended for the reasons mentioned in the report, in order for it to read as follows. It's therefore recommended that city clinic network be rationalised to reduce the financial burden around the city and thereby improve service efficiency, including negotiating the transfer of shared facilities and mothballing of facilities in close proximity by June 2022. Council will note that as a result of the above-mentioned recommendations, the following facilities will remain open, Alsis River, Maitland, North Pine, Rocklands, East Ridge, Alpen and Lavender Hills Clinic. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor May?
Speaker?
Yes, we can hear you. Carry on.
Speaker, our position is to show that the city of Cape Town is taking an easy way out by closing and transferring the clinic to the metro. While the province is failing to give our people the services they deserve, city of Cape Town must take full responsibility. Mayor, you said you will take care of our people around the city. City of Cape Town should invest more facilities on our clinics and allow those clinics to open 24 hours. Mayor, can you please act on this as you promised our people that you will give them equal services? And Mayor, please don't allow city of Cape Town and DA government run away on their responsibilities by transferring the clinics to the metro. As the EFF, we reject the transfer of the clinic and the closing of the clinic. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor van der Ros?
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, I think I should first start by saying to our councillor that has just spoken, councillor May, we are the metro and you probably mean by reference to the province. So just to rectify yourself there, that we are metro. Councillor, from good, thank you very much. Thank you that you believe and confirm that I have a good, sincere, pure heart and the residents of the city of Cape Town comes first at all times. And then to councillor Sampson, thank you for that. I appreciate the fact that not only do you say that you don't want the clinics to close, but you actually went and investigated as well. So with that being said, good afternoon, everybody. Today I just want to take you on a little journey and I want you to understand the fact that in order to reach the decision that I have made or that I have requested the official and the administration to make, I needed to actually go out there and learn what our communities go through. So I went and I visited each and every one of the facilities. I spoke to the residents. Yes, I have collected the 2,106 signed petition forms that you have given me, good, and I have counted it. So thank you for the support that you have within the Mitchell's Plain area, but I have counted. So although you say that you have that 6,000 support, we had 2,106 signatures only, but I do appreciate that as well. And I went to all the facilities and I found that indeed, although the decision that was made then seemed deemed and fit, right now, we cannot make that decision. Right now, we need to look at what the residents need. Right now, because of the influx in gang violence, we cannot afford our residents to actually walk from one boundary to the other, being sick with their ill child, not having transport. We have to sit and we have to think, what do we do that's best for our residents? And with that being said, Speaker, my chairperson has given the recommendation, my chairperson has said why we need to do this, but the one thing I want us to really focus on is moving forward as an administration who is fairly new, six months into it, and an administration who's learning, the one thing that we have to acknowledge is that we have to up our game when it comes to public participation and public engagements. And that's the one thing that we have learnt and the one thing that I make sure that moving forward we're going to deal with in order to make any further decisions with the closures of anything. The last thing I want to be known as is the Miko member of closures. Speaker, with that being said, I want to say that with us as the DLD government, I want to ask, with everybody's good heart that we have here in this chambers, please support our recommendation to keep our facilities open.
Thank you very much. It looks like that is a unanimous support for the recommendation. Can we move the recommendation? Councillor Alderman Tasi?
I'm rising again.
Councillors, councillors, can we focus? Alderman Tasi?
I'm rising, Speaker, on rule 32.1.1 to councillor van der Ros. You did well, Boki. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll let that go. Thank you. So the next item, all right, councillors, please. Councillors, that's enough. You can celebrate or whatever it is you're trying to do after the meeting. Can we move to item 20C? This item is now agreed. Can we then move the recommendation? Thank you. Item 21, in volume 3, councillor Stevens.
Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Mayor colleagues, officials, members of the media and members of the public. Madam Speaker, let me start off by saying belated Happy Freedom Day to each and every one here today and to the public at large. Our freedom was not free and it came at a very high price.
Excuse me, councillors, please, the lady's talking, the councillor's talking, just to give her some respect. Thank you.
Our freedom was indeed not free and it came at a very high price. So let's keep that in mind, that we have afforded this opportunity to discuss the management of the city's assets and funds due to those freedom fighters who fought for this democracy and ultimately paid with their lives in order for us to do so. Speakers, with this in mind, that I want to remind all of us about our Freedom Charter and I want to highlight two statements and I quote, "The people shall share in the country's wealth and the land shall be shared amongst those who work it", close quote. Speaker, our people have been robbed of their birthright to land and as much as I know that this piece of land being leased will not make a significant difference to our poorer communities, I want to highlight the fact that as the city, we cannot keep on leasing property or land to the same companies for years on end. How is this justifying the fact that we say we are an inclusive city? We need to go have a look at our public participation process and see how we can reach more residents to take part in these processes. Not all of our people read the Cape Argus or the Berger. There must be a different way of getting this information out there. Speaker, on my oversight visit to both these properties, I again realise that we are staying in a city of two tails. When you get to Blauburg and Greenport, you almost forget about the struggle that our poorer communities on the Cape Flats and our townships go through on a daily basis, until you get back on the N2 and the reality hits you like a fist in the face. Why can we not get the same services all over Cape Town? With that being said, Speaker, we as the ANC support this item, but we just want to put on record that the public participation process needs to be looked at. I thank you.
Thank you, councillor Riada.
Thank you, Madam Chief. Initially, I was quite confused as to why we were speaking to this item and I understand that I'm still quite confused. In terms of public participation, before I even start my item, Madam, we have ward committees filled with representatives from our communities and those ward committee representatives have the responsibility to take this message out to all its members as well. So it's not just the Berger and the Argus. Councillors also share these adverts and all information from the city on all sorts of platforms and in meetings. Also, I will get to just now about the viability of the land, but this public participation went internal and external. It took place and there was no objections received from either process. National and provincial treasury were notified and as is the requirement, and there were no objections received from them. The section head, and this is the important part, of land use management, Ms Murray, confirmed that the sale of this property as a viable site cannot be supported. Why? Due to the access limitation and the amount of municipal services there on, amongst other things. She also mentions later that no structures are allowed to be built because of the municipal services. So having this as anything else other than just an open space would be a waste if we didn't allow the school to use it. So this portion of the property is being utilised currently as a sports field and as we know, due to the short sighted and consistent decrease in the Western Cape Education Department's budget by national government, less and less schools can be built at the detriment of ever-increasing learners living in the Western Cape. The ones that can be built very often have to sacrifice sports completely due to the lack of funding and space. It's therefore fantastic that the city can provide a piece of land that's not viable for sale or development to a school for leasing purposes at market value, so that the learners will be able to participate in sport. Whilst the city is lifted from the burden of maintenance, the children of our city will benefit in return. The recommendations are clear. A market rent is payable, the rental is to be adjusted at 6% per annum compounded annually, the lease is for 10 years and will be reviewed after five years. The city will not pay any compensation for improvements made to the property, no structures are to be erected on the property and the property is to be used for sports purposes only. So therefore I move this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we all support the item? Councillor McCaskey?
I have clarity to the councillor just.
Sure, ask the point of clarity.
On the issue that she is confused.
councillor McCasie?
I have clarity to the councillor just.
Sure. Ask the point of clarity.
On the issue that she is confused and around the issue of what councillor Stevens raised on the issue of advertisement by the city on the Berger and the Cape Argus. Is she saying that it's gonna continue, it's supposed to be like that? We've been raising this in our sub councils on items of this nature, that it shouldn't be the case because our people read Vugani and City Vision. You don't expect our people from this other side to read the Berger and Cape Argus because it gets too broad. So I just, I don't.
Wait, wait, wait. Let it.
Don't be chajarach.
Let councillor McCasie finish.
Are you now saying that the city should continue to advertise on the Berger and Cape Argus only?
All right. So where it's advertised was decided by council. But we also do advertise, as far as I'm aware, in the freebies. But if there's a specific issue, then please bring it to our attention and we will make an effort to incorporate those as well. Councillor Rieder, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, nothing from our side. Thank you, Speaker.
Very much. All right. So, Speaker, councillor McCasie?
She would not be able to respond because it's what she has commented. And I am making a comment here broadly to the city. It is what is happening, it continues to happen. It must stop when public participation gets to be done. It should consider the area where the issue is so that people from our communities do not read the Berger and Cape Argus. The city must stop doing that.
Okay, your point is taken. The city is obliged to do that, but it can be inclusive and do others. So just bring the names of the ones that you want incorporated and we will get property management to include them. Okay. All right. Thank you. What's up, May? Then I'll remember. Thank you. Okay, we're moving then on to the next item, item 22. councillor Stevens?
Speaker, councillor Jonathan from Good, 20C. We didn't cover that item.
No, it was the speaker for the PA withdrew and the item was moved. You need to talk to your colleague down the. Thank you.
Speaker.
Who is that? councillor McKenzie?
20C was agreed to, speaker.
Yes, it was.
The good councillor needs to.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. All right. The next item, councillor Stevens, is item 22. Can you talk to item 22, please?
Thank you, Speaker. This item refers to C22, authorisation to commence with a public participation in F1056. Greenpoint, speaker, on page 69, it states that this property is in Ward 16, which is incorrect. If I'm not mistaken, this is part of Ward 54. Speaker, I refer to my previous speech on the concerns of the public participation process. It's also concerning that this particular lease to the Point Sporting Club is coming on since 1988. So this is 34 years in total. Does this mean that this club has the monopoly on the property that belongs to the city and therefore the ratepayers? And the city claims to be a well-run, caring and inclusive city. The main aim of public participation is to encourage the public to have meaningful input into the decision-making process. But if we only reach a few people, this process does not serve its purpose and then only becomes a tick box exercise. Madam Speaker, public participation is a two-way process where both the city and the public can learn and gain benefit. Effective public participation allows the public's values and views to be identified and incorporated into the decisions that ultimately affect them. Madam Speaker, in conclusion, that being said, we as the ANC agree on this item, but once again, we want to emphasise that we need to re-look the public participation process, especially how we advertise it. And also, in conclusion, Madam Speaker, I would like to wish my colleague councillor Banele Madjingo a very happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday, councillor. councillor Zhao?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The item 22 is the epitome of a well-run city, Madam Speaker. A city that understands the need to protect its assets and to leverage these assets for optimal use and rationalisation and to stimulate economic benefit to the city and all its residents. This parcel of land has been used as a sporting facility and linked parking since 1988. As the councillor mentioned before me, there has been existing leases to different leaseholders through this period. A well-utilised facility that has provided countless job opportunities over the last 24 years to thousands of Capetonians. The DA city of Cape Town continues to have the lowest unemployment rate, lower than any other metro in the country. It is time that the ANC starts to understand that municipalities have a primary role in ensuring that they create metros that provide a stable platform that enable economic growth. And it's only through economic growth that we can deal with the issues that are plaguing our city due to a failed national state. And as our mayor said in his opening address, we refuse to let us be part of that failed national state. The opposition continues to drive different narratives around our property issues, Madam Speaker. But let me just say, just this month, we have seen the launch of the programme by the mayor that will see the fast-tracking of state land release for affordable housing. We've seen over 17 million being allocated to cut red tape and fast-track land release in the city's new draft budget. We've seen the human settlements department host the very first and very successful affordable housing in Darba. Cape Town continues to do more and can do more with its partners working together. Madam Speaker, the lease requirements in this item have a number of important components to it, not least of all the maintenance and the use of the property. This land is in the heart of the sports, recreational and events precinct of the city with a stadium, shared fields and world-class urban park on its doorstep. The lease will ensure that a large portion of the parking area remains open for the public to access this. The lease also ensures that while the tennis courts remain, the responsibilities of the leaseholder to maintain are also open to the public for general use and not for the sole use of the club. An inclusive city, Madam Speaker, ensuring a sustainable balance of economic opportunity and fair use of facilities. The leaseholder is also required to be a participant in the Greenpoint Urban Park Forum and other forums around the Greenpoint Common. And as part of that process, will have a joint responsibility for the maintenance, cleanliness and law enforcement provision of the Greenpoint Common. With a potential revenue of almost 900,000 rand, Madam Speaker, this is a prime example of a municipality leveraging assets for the best possible outcome to enhance a doing more budget to provide greater and increased service delivery to all Capetonians. A well-thought-out lease with a competitive process to be undertaken. The councillor Stevens is correct, it is referenced as Ward 16. I think it should have referenced as Subcouncil 16. It fell in Ward 115 and now into Ward 54. Madam Speaker, aside from that, I have no hesitation in moving the item, which is asking council to vote in favour of the launching of public participation and the recommendations are on page 63 and 64. Thank you.
All right. Can we move the recommendation as stated? All right. Thank you. Then we move on to the next item, item C23. councillor Davids.
Good day, Madam Speaker, Mayor and colleagues. While we agree that the city of Cape Town must collect revenue, we have seen the gang violence on the Cape Flats and we cannot turn a blind eye. It's not something that has happened yesterday. This pandemic has been happening for years. The communities has been trying, begging and pleading for the city to release land. They can use these pieces of lands for kids to develop themselves, skills developing centres, rehab centres, et cetera. As the Cape Colour Congress, we would also ask the city of Cape Town, when will they make land available for social housing in the inner city? We have a backlog that exceeds half a million in the Western Cape, where more than 300,000 is in the city of Cape Town. Madam Speaker, it's been years that our mothers and fathers have been travelling two to three hours to get to work and back. This is still an issue over the Cape Flats and Atlantas. Our children don't have enough time spent with their parents because of the work hours and the long travelling hours. Again, my question, Madam Speaker, how soon will the city release land in the inner city so that the children on the Cape Flats and surrounds can also enjoy the freedom that the others within the city in the lavish areas also enjoy? South Africans celebrated Freedom Day yesterday. Yet today, we still have a huge gap between the rich and the poor. We still have to cope with everyday high levels of poverty, unemployment, inequality, very poor service delivery, gang violence, sexual violence and a large scale of corruption. So are we really free? Only once integration takes place in the city or in the whole of South Africa, then maybe our people will and can enjoy the Freedom Day celebrations. And I thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. councillor Mcmohan? Just hang on, it's not working properly. All right, now try it.
Can you hear me now? There we go. Madam Speaker, on the 18th of November last year, in this very chamber, in the inaugural speech by newly-elected mayor Jordan Hill Lewis, the honourable mayor made a comment about understanding a simple truth, that good government underpins investment, investment underpins economic growth and economic growth lifts people out of poverty. Speaker, the honourable mayor went on to say, and I quote, "To the small business owner who has done everything in your power to keep your doors open and keep paying your staff, we dedicate ourselves today to foster growth so that your business has a better chance at thriving." Close quote. Speaker, even though the DA-led Western Cape has the lowest expanded unemployment rate of around 30%, the lowest of any province in the country, there is still work to be done. And we need, no, we must do more to create and protect jobs. Madam Speaker, apart from the other 11 inner-city social housing projects that this DA-led metro is pursuing in the inner city, this item today is a lease of a piece of pavement along the Greenpoint Main Road precinct for the purposes of extending a restaurant's footprint. The area measures 2.3 metres wide by 17 metres long, that's 41 square metres, and ties in with all the other businesses that have extended this small area along this business portion of Greenpoint. Businesses like Giovanni's Deli, The Butcher Man Restaurant, Best of Asia Sushi and Ditio Pizzas and Rocka Mamas and others. It is these very businesses, Speaker, that fought, battled and struggled to keep the doors open during lockdown, whose hours were contained again and again and yet, who kept paying staff. And it is these very same kinds of businesses that employs so many of our city's residents and helps put food on the table for families. These businesses, whose business model is linked to the Greenpoint Events Precinct, an industry that was also decimated during lockdown, adding further economic pressure to bear. And thanks to the hard-working staff of this very city's events offices, the lights at the end of the tunnel with a flurry of new international events being secured for this precinct should add better benefit. Speaker, the leasing of this strip of land will not impede pedestrian traffic. The land cannot be used for any other logical purpose and leasing it at market value, mind you, would assist the restaurant business employing many staff and it's a sensible economic decision. Therefore, Madam Speaker, with our focus on creating jobs to help lift people out of poverty, to lift the economy, to help the plight of ordinary Capetonians looking for work, Speaker, I support this item.
Thank you. Then we have a recommendation on page 146. Can we move with the recommendation? Thank you. Then we move on to the next item, item 25. Mr Acting Chief Whip?
Speaker, we only have one recommendation, that councillor Jackson be removed as a member from the Innovation Ease of Doing Business Portfolio Committee. Thank you.
Can we move the recommendation? Thank you. Then we move on to item 26 and we have councillor Yaki Adam.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Thank you, Madam Speaker. The 2020/21 Integrated Annual Report of the City of Cape Town was tabled at a special meeting on the 24th of February 2022. What happened? The Oversight Process commenced on the 25th of February 2022 when the Auditor General of South Africa briefed IMPACT on the 2020/21 audit outcomes of the City of Cape Town, referred to in A1. On the 4th of March 2022, IMPACT met with the city manager and executive directors to respond to questions raised by IMPACT, referred to in A2. In addition to this meeting, IMPACT submitted directed questions to the city manager and the executive directors and IMPACT met on the 29th of March 2022 to consider these responses in A3. Comments and resolutions from the Oversight Process and outstanding items to be added to the schedule of matters receiving attention are contained in A1. The IARs are made public and questions and comments can be submitted by the Organisational Performance Management Department. Comments from the public are forwarded to the relevant line departments who respond to the persons directly. And questions and comments from the portfolio committees and sub councils form part of the IMPACT Oversight Questions, referred to in A3. The Audit and Performance Audit Committee submitted a report to IMPACT for consideration during the Oversight Process, that is in A1. What will now happen is IMPACT will establish task themes to investigate the unauthorised, irregular and frivolous and wasteful expenditure and other additional disclosures in terms of Section 32.2 of the MFMA and report to council on conclusions of these investigations. The recommendation is, the Municipal Public Accounts Committee have fully considered the 2020/21 Integrated Annual Report of the City of Cape Town and the representation thereon. We recommend that council adopts the Oversight Report and approves the annual report without reservations. It is recommended that the resolutions in A1 to the attached report be supported for action where applicable, be referred to the relevant officials and feedback where applicable, be provided to the Municipal Public Accounts Committee. I thank you.
Thank you. councillor Haskin?
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, the annual report, once again, is a glossy oversell of city successes and it blatantly ignores its own failures. It's not a balanced, accurate and true record of the performance of the city. If you think you've heard this before, you would be quite right because we've said this for several years in a row now. It's very clear to the ACDP that the administration and the government of the city refuses to listen. You clearly have no interest in presenting a truthful performance report to ratepayers, to the electorate, investors and the private sector. We told council in February this year that there are material omissions that must be included in the annual report and factually inaccurate and misleading statements that should be corrected in the annual report, but IMPACT hasn't even interrogated these. With Cape Town, if we look at the year that is under review, with Cape Town already two months into the 2020 COVID pandemic that started in March, council adopted a budget in May 2020 that did not respond at all to the pandemic. The financial year under review started in July 2020, three months later, but still obviously did not respond to the pandemic. In August, finally, an adjustment budget was passed. That was five months after the pandemic started, that the city finally caused the budget of the city to be responsive to the pandemic. But the city insists that it is responsive to local and international trends as a world-class city. That is not a world-class response to a pandemic. One wonders what will happen the next time the pandemic comes along and the city takes five or six months to respond to it. What impact would that have had on the ratepayers of Cape Town? IMPACT is silent on this five-month delay. It didn't ask the city administration, what will you do differently next time another pandemic comes along? Nothing. No questions. Well, not according to the reports. The second omission from the annual report is of course the Stranfrentaine homeless camp. There's no mention of that, the city's biggest humanitarian badge of shame. No mention of the 42 million rand of irregular expenditure. Not one sentence of it in the annual report. IMPACT is apparently still dealing with it. Thirdly, the IMPACT Oversight Report confirms that IMPACT did not ask why the MyCity N2 Express was operational, was claimed to be operational during the financial year under review, when it was not. It stopped in the previous year, 2019. It was not operational at all during this financial year under review. It only became operational in February this year. But there's a claim on page 76, which is factually inaccurate. And it remains there now, apparently with the blessing of IMPACT, apparently with the blessing of this body here that's about to produce, approve a report that's inaccurate. That should have been corrected. That's a factual inaccuracy. So what else does the city ignore? What else did IMPACT ignore? With thousands of jobs being lost monthly during the pandemic, IMPACT didn't ask why the mayor's job creation project planned to and created fewer jobs that year than it did in two years prior to that. With sanitation a key response to the pandemic, IMPACT did not ask why the city planned to and did install fewer toilets in informal settlements than it did in 2018/19. With thousands of families starving, IMPACT did not ask why the city awarded the Cape Town Stadium 221 million rand to upgrade its executive suites. That was more important than.
Time, councillor?
That was more important than the starving families. Speaker, this report is inaccurate. It has factual omissions that we cannot support. It has factual omissions that we cannot support. So we do not support it, and we have reservations.
Thank you, councillor Fonseal.
Madam Speaker, the criticism from my colleague from the ACDP on integrated annual report of the city is part of the democratic process and is noted with concern. But the question do arise, did he actually ask those questions himself because he had a number of opportunities to do so? Although it makes us uncomfortable to hear these things, it’s necessary for a healthy democracy that there is effective oversight and that the opposition keeps the government accountable, that issues are raised and areas where improvement is necessary get mentioned, that we are all made aware, that we are kept humble, and to keep on reminding us to focus on our main responsibilities, service delivery to the residents of the City of Cape Town. I hope most South Africans realise and treasure our democracy as the most important thing on earth, fought for hard and paid for with blood, tears, and hardship. The irregular expenditure in the local government was 80 billion rand in the previous financial year, an increase of 207%, mostly because of a lack of accountability, lack of respect for regulations, inadequate monitoring, all phases used by the auditor general to describe the situation in other provinces under ANC rule. On the ground, in local government, in the rest of the country, our democracies are being stolen by cadres and their supporters. No accountability, no monitoring, no service delivery at the cost of the lives and futures of our residents and the citizens of South Africa. The auditor generals comment on the ever-increasing wasteful and irregular expenditure. Ethical and accountable leadership should drive the required change. That is exactly what is required from all of us in this room, political representatives and officials, and all the officials in the employment of the City of Cape Town. All of us must show ethical and accountable leadership in order to drive change in the culture in the city and the administration. We must work harder towards a better tomorrow. And according to the auditor general, the City of Cape Town has come a long way. It is evident that lessons were learned from the past and that a large number of processes and procedures were and are being implemented in order to ensure compliance. Continued training and performance management are now embedded in the systems and procedures of the city. And the tracking and monitoring of all activities of the staff by management is a priority and are continuously emphasised and managed by the city manager as part of his responsibility as the accounting officer. Over the past few years, I’ve experienced the commitment required and ethical and accountable leadership shown by the political leadership and the experienced and focused management team referred to by the AG in the City of Cape Town. All the mentioned traits are required to make Cape Town better, to improve service delivery to our residents, and to show commitment to a better tomorrow. The integrated annual report tells the story of delivering service to all in the difficult times under lockdown as a result of COVID-19, of new plans and innovative initiatives to make the City of Cape Town better, to create a future and a tomorrow for all. Despite the significant challenge experienced during the year under review, the city has exhibited increased accountability and transparency. There’s also been a marked decrease in the irregular incidents. But not everything in the report was a good news story. Issues highlighted by the AG like the significant unspend on the capital and operational budgets, something again mentioned by the mayor in the current financial year, the non-compliance regarding supply chain regulations, and the inadequate monitoring of internal controls impacts severely on service delivery and our matters of real concern. The city manager and his executive team must take full responsibility and ensure that issues are being addressed as a matter of urgency. And council must ensure proper and effective oversight and monitoring in order to ensure compliance. We are all committed to implement the necessary control to prevent and reduce the recurrence of these events, especially in the area of supply chain management. I’ve learnt over the years during my services in impact that improving financial behaviour and conduct is like a love story. It’s not about the moment, but about the journey. And I cannot wait for the final prize. The journey may be dumpy and uncomfortable from time to time, but I’m sure when we finally reach our destination, a clean audit, it will be a happy day, and we will all celebrate. I want to make use of the opportunity to thank the city manager and his dedicated staff for the hard work and dedication towards the residents of the City of Cape Town, and to my colleagues on impact for their continuous focus and effort, and for the fact that we can work together as a team to serve and execute our mandate. Speaker, I table the integrated annual report for the 2020/21 financial year for adoption and approval without reservation. I thank you.
Thank you. We have the recommendation in front of us on pages 5 to 6. Councillor Sotash, sorry, thank you.
No, thank you very much, Speaker. Speaker, again, I’m rising in terms of Rule 32.1.1. I’m directing the question to the mayor and the municipal manager. The issue of the irregular expenditure has been coming a long way in the city. There was a commitment that was given by the municipal manager that they are going to do everything in their effort to cap the irregular expenditure, because the irregular expenditure speaks to the issue of non-compliance with the legislation. What is it that, Mr Mayor, you are going to do to deal with the weaknesses within the supply chain? Because issues that are raised by councillor Haskins are the valid issues that have been coming for the last financial years. And seemingly, the issue of the irregular expenditure in the City of Cape Town is continuing without those who are involved taking to cleaners. So what is it that you are going to do to make sure that we cap this irregular expenditure? Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Would you like me to answer with the city manager?
Well, Mr Mayor, you didn’t speak on the item, but, I mean, obviously you have a response. I think it was killer to respond.
Thank you very much, Alderman Sotash. I would absolutely agree that we’d like to see irregular expenditure come down. And obviously, the report that we’re discussing refers to the year end June 2021. So it’s now already nine months old. But this is something that I’m keeping a careful eye on and chatting to the colleagues in impact about. We want to see it come down over time. It’s just about tighter controls and hoping that some of those big numbers, you know, the larger tenders that get designated as irregular expenditure don’t come through anymore, and that we tighten up those controls. I don’t know if you want to add anything to that, CM?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor Sotash. Councillor Sotash, I’m not going to be long. I explained to impact in details what is being done. The reports that you are getting now and also on this previous annual report is because of the COVID that impact could not sit and deal with those matters. They should have been dealt with. But unfortunately, each and every year when the AG comes, if you have not dealt with the previous irregular expenditure, it’s added to the following financial year. So if you look at it, it looks as if it is increasing. But if you look at the financial year by each financial year, you’ll see the decrease. And as I’ve made a taking to impact, I also make a taking here to this council that you will see even with this coming, this financial year, you will see exactly what I’m talking about, that the systems that are in place are bearing fruit.
Thank you very much, councillors. That’s the end of volume three. So I’m going to adjourn the meeting now till quarter past two. There is a snack for councillors out in the foyer on my left, and also down in the banqueting hall in that foyer. So if we can be back here at quarter past two, 2:15. Thank you.
When a mosque in district six was actually fined for the call to pray. Following the complaint, this city made promises that this exemption would be amended. To date, that has not happened, even though this bylaw was tabled before council in September 2021. No amendment to the exemption clause, section three, was made. The city website currently still says that church bells and the call to pray is part of noise disturbance alongside nightclubs and industrial noise. This standard operation can never supersede a bylaw. And it is very insulting to the residents when a mayor gives the impression that he has done something about this bylaw by telling them that he has issued a standard operating procedure. Madam Speaker, this bylaw must be amended in terms of the rules of this house. This council is supposed to be amending it, making a decision whether or not this amendment that is tabled today is either accepted or not. If it's not accepted, then the motion must be amended to make it acceptable to all. No public participation, other than the mayor saying that he spoke to the MJC. There are other religious entities in this city that have not been consulted. I understand that this was supposed to mute the motion. But what the mayor has actually done is insulted the residents by giving them the false impression that he's actually done something. But his whole aim was to mute a motion. This motion is not muted until this council makes a decision in terms of the motion. And the motion before us states that clause three C, clause C must be added to this motion. Places of worship such as churches and mosques operating lawfully in terms of the Cape Town planning bylaw and its zoning scheme shall be exempted from the provision of the Western Cape Noise Control Regulation and from the provision of this bylaw for the purposes of religious sounds, calls to prayer, ringing of bells and singing. Madam Speaker, that is what we proposed. I expected today either a vote for or against this amendment and that after that decision was taken that it would be sent to the portfolio and for public participation so that we could amend the bylaw and bring it back to this council so that we can have a city where people have the freedom of religion and not be bullied into being silenced when they want to praise their God. I thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, councillor. Mr Mayor?
Sorry, Madam Speaker. I think we still have speakers on the item.
The mayor is one of the speakers?
Oh, okay. Oh, it's fine. Let me just make sure I'm doing the right thing. I'm proposing the amendment now and then I will...
You can do that?
And then I will...
And then you talk to it at the end again, yes?
Because I want the people to be able to accept the proposal.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, Madam Speaker, I move the following amendment to the motion by councillor Little to amend councillor Little's motion by deleting all of the words after motion and replacing them with the following. Noting that there is no need to amend the city's bylaw to provide for the city's recognition of the importance of religious sounds or calls to prayer within our communities. Noting further that A, a blanket exemption from the application of the Western Cape Noise Control Regulations is neither reasonable nor necessary to achieve this purpose. And B, the city's protection of reasonable religious sounds can most easily be achieved and most immediately be achieved by a standard operating procedure governing the conduct of all of our offices across the city wherein it is confirmed that section three of the Streets Public Places and Prevention of Noise Nuisances bylaw is not applicable to places of worship operating within an appropriate zoning. Therefore, resolves that council recognizes that a standard operating procedure has been developed and finalized, the purpose of which is to codify the methods by which officials of the city of Cape Town, all officials of the city of Cape Town, implement the City Streets Public Places bylaw and the Western Cape Noise Control Regulations in an appropriate and sensitive manner that protects and upholds religious freedoms in our city with due regard to the rights of other residents. I so move.
Thank you. And that amendment seconded to? Councillor Kassim?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The EEC supports the motion for the exempting of all churches and mosques among other places...
Sorry, councillor. We have the wrong councillor, Kassim. I'm sorry. Okay. I've got... Is councillor Kassim?
I can't hear you.
I was just seconding the motion, but councillor Kassim is, will be speaking on it.
Which councillor Kassim? Aslam Kassim. Councillor Aslam Kassim?
Speaker, can we see the wording of that motion please? Speaker, speak on a point of order, can we see the motion, the wording of that motion that the mayor just tabled, please? Can we have a look at the wording? It's very difficult to remember what the mayor's said in our mind.
All right, we will make a, can we make it available? All right, we're making copies, we'll come back to that then. Councillor Satoshi?
Speaker, I'm, I'm rising on the point of order to you. Procedurally, this is not how we're supposed to be dealing with the amendment. You, you're supposed to allow the debate on the motion. Then if the House does not agree with that motion, the mayor would come with his amendment.
No, that's not how it works.
It is.
No, it can also work that there is an amendment proposed and then eventually you vote on the amendment and then the substantive motion.
How are we going to debate that motion?
I will show you.
When the amendment is put for vote.
Well, I will show you, you vote for the amendment first and then you vote on the substantive motion. Councillor Makasi?
Speaker, to follow up on what councillor Satoshi is raising, documentation were given to us as councillors to prepare for this council meeting. So when we're preparing and when we're fielding speakers in the whips meeting, we filled out speakers on councillor Little's motion and not on the mayor's amendment. Now, we have seen the media statement released by the mayor this morning, but it did not speak directly to us because it's not given to this council. Procedurally, it's supposed, like other items, discussion ensues and the speaker from the DA which speaks last. If there is an amendment, they do that and then we discuss or we vote on the amendment. But the original documentation normally is discussed as is. Secondly, I want clarity on this Kassim that is going to speak of Mr A because he is recorded on the next item, item twenty eight, and not on this one. And we are still waiting to speak on the item as political parties as fielded in that meeting of the whips meeting. Thank you.
Yes, they're all going to get a chance to speak as fielded in the whips meeting and we have two A Kassims on today's agenda. So, moving on, we're going to go into the debate and we will come back and hand out the amendment and then we will take the voting after that, okay? Madam Speaker, sorry.
Speaker, point of order.
Point of order, councillor.
In response to councillor's query, councillor Aslam Kassim was added to the speakers list early this morning to speak on this item and he speaks on the next item as well.
All right, I wanted to also speak on that as you are clarifying that the latest speakers notes that you receive from the chief whip's office from Lulega does not have an A Kassim unless you have done that here in chamber so that we are then informed of that because all of us here are looking at our gadgets and computers. There's no A Kassim, the only A Kassim is of the EFF.
Councillor, if I can clarify that, quite a few parties have been here with changes to the speakers list, which we've accommodated, okay?
Then speaker, that must be then communicated to us, we are not poppies here. As whips, we agreed on the speakers list, if there is any update. You normally do and say there's been a change, but you don't just call.
No, I don't normally change the speakers.
When I come to you or the chief whip to change speakers, you normally inform council that the speaker has changed because you have been informed.
No, I inform the party that will accept the changes. But if that's the case, the way you want it, that's fine, we will make a plan going forward.
It must be that way.
Thank you, okay. So now we're going to move into the debate, we will have the second A Kassim.
Speaker, just to be clear again, are we discussing the motion now?
You can discuss either, at the end when you can vote, we'll apply your mind both to the amendment and then to the substantive motion.
Okay, I'm clear now.
You're clear, okay. Councillor?
Speaker?
Councillors?
Speaker?
Speaker, who is that?
That's me, Speaker. Speaker?
Oh, sorry, Mr Adams.
I'm going to ask you to advise the CMC slash DA councillor here to stop disrupting me, I'm trying to pay attention, please, man.
Are you referring to the councillor behind you? Councillor?
Sleepy one from impact.
Councillor Adams? Can you please live in harmony at the back there and not disrupt councillor Adams?
Speaker, it's just gonna be a problem if I turn around and tell him the wrong thing, man, then you're gonna find me.
Okay, I, I, I understand your predicament. Councillor Yahia Adams, will you please not interfere with councillor Fadil Adams? Okay, going forward, I'm going to move to the EFF councillor Kassim.
Speaker, before you move on, Speaker, Jonathan from Good. Speaker?
Councillor?
You're going to give us the amendment, but can I request?
Excuse me?
You are making the amendment available that the mayor has proposed, but is it possible that you can also give us the SOP because we do not know what's the content of that SOP? Thank you, Speaker.
Councillor Kassim?
No, Kassim.
Councillor from the EFF?
Are you giving Kassim of the EFF?
You have two minutes.
No, I'm not a speaker here, but I'm just checking, the Kassim is going to speak now. It's a Kassim of EFF, not the Kassim sitting over there on this item. Because you gave that Kassim on this item, you're confused.
Councillor, don't worry, I'm not confused. I'm going to give the EFF councillor Kassim and then the other.
If you're not confused, you are deliberately. If you are not confused, you are deliberately.
The other councillor.
Someone who's not on the list to speak.
Councillor?
You are deliberately.
The other councillor Kassim will also get a turn, okay?
Not on this item.
Both of them. Councillor Kassim, please.
The EFF supports the motion for the exempting of all churches and mosques among other places of worship from this bylaw and which has now all of a sudden been amended following a motion set for today and which this DA-led city obviously knew that it would be backed up opposition parties. However, Madam Speaker, we demand that the offensive references made previously to any religious call be removed. It is an insult to any religious denomination to have referred to their religious practices as a noise pollution and more so to the Muslim community who have been harassed by this DA-led city with letters of insult. And we must not shy away from the fact that these letters delivered to Zina Tull Islam and also to the Bayou Islamic Society didn't back down from this DA-led city. The Muslim community, the Muslim call to prayer and many other religious practices has been part of our communities for many years along with different African traditional practices and even simple ceremonies like the tokosa. It is a disgrace that we are even sitting here today discussing this matter to exclude the religious practices previously referred to by the city as a noise pollution. This DA-led city should not sugarcoat this matter by trying to take credit today in resolving this issue as we should never have in the first place reached this point of debate around it. We demand that an apology is made by the city to these masjids or any other religious group disrespected for practicing the religion. And we are hopeful that the amendments being made, what the amendments being made, that this DA-led city will never gain stupor's low to deliver to any place of worship such insult and disrespect. Thank you.
Councillor Adakasim?
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It's so important for us to realize diversity is one of our greatest assets as a, as a city, as South Africa. And as the Democratic Alliance, where we govern, we will take active steps to promote and advance this richly diverse metro we live in. We have, under the leadership of Mayor Jordan Hillois, reassured our commitment to our faith-based community by developing a SOP and the motion, protecting appropriately zoned places of worship from being classified as potential noise nuisance. And this is the outcome of consistent and fair engagements with our faith-based community. The item before us is not a football. It's a question of constitutional protection and also dignity for our people. Voters know this and they can be rest assured that the Democratic Alliance, it's a party based on constitutionalism and we fight for the rights of all South Africans. Notwithstanding the realization and affirmation that South Africa belongs to all who live in it, united in our diversity, it gives me great pleasure to endorse and also support the amendments tabled by our executive mayor, Jordan Hillois. Thank you.
Councillor Gardini?
Speaker, Speaker, on a point of clarity, please.
Councillor?
At the last council sitting, Speaker, because of my medical condition at the time, the chief whip replied very late to my message with our speakers list. I think it was about six o'clock in the evening and the CCC was told that we would not be speaking because we submitted late. But now I see councillor Kassim was added this morning. So what I want to know is how does the Democratic Alliance find this type of leeway when the rest of us have to suffer? Thank you.
So your councillor is on the list, so you will get an opportunity for him to speak. But the mayor has the leeway to introduce an amendment and to speak to an item he was on it, so.
I refer to councillor Kassim who was added this morning, Speaker.
And there's another councillor added too. So can I then move on to?
You didn't give any clarity, Speaker.
I'll give it to you in writing, councillor Gardini?
Because you're gonna look for the legal opinion, Speaker. Speaker, are you serious?
Is councillor Gardini here?
I am here, Madam Speaker, but you seem to have an ongoing debate. But nevertheless, just yesterday, we celebrated twenty eight years of democracy in South Africa under the ANC government. In nineteen ninety six, the ANC government adopted its constitution. And one of the cornerstone of that constitution was that section fifteen recognizes everyone has a right to freedom of conscious religion thoughts, beliefs and opinions. It was with that in mind that the ANC supports councillor Little's motion. The DA-led administration must respect this right enshrined in our constitution. The media release issued by Alderman JP Smith yesterday, as well as this amendment which is done by the mayor just now, is an admission by the DA-led government of an ill-thought policy that this noise nuisance bylaws is troubling on the rights of people of Cape Town, allow people of Cape Town to worship freely. It was with that in mind that the ANC supports the motion. Thank you very much, Speaker.
Thank you, councillor Richards.
Hi, thank you, Madam Speaker. Assalamualaikum, warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam Speaker, councillors, in twenty nineteen, the city of Cape Town passed a bylaw that impairs the city to the rest of the world stating that churches, church bells and Muslim call to pray, the Adhan, as a nuisance or noise pollution. To add to further to the insult, the city sent out a letter to several of the mosques warning them about the noise pollution and nuisance. Madam Speaker, the call to pray is called the Mu'adin and the Mu'adin recites the words Allah hu akbar. This means that God is the greatest. How dare the city, how dare the city of Cape Town call this a nuisance? Last night, the eve before we came to fight for this bylaw, a press statement, a press release, a press statement was released, the city admits that people's religious dignity was taken away by this bylaw. Yet, Madam Speaker, in the same press release, the city of Cape Town states, states the lifting of the noise pollution will only stand in the appropriate zoning, meaning that it still stands in some places, church bells and the call to pray is still considered a nuisance. Madam Speaker, we would like to appeal to the city of Cape Town to revisit the bylaw with a few, with all due respect to all religions and to open debate with all religious leaders and hope that we come to an admirable approach. We can surely not consider the calling to, the calling of our residents to pray as a nuisance. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, councillor Satorin.
Assalamualaikum, good afternoon, everybody. We, the CCC, would like to remind this DA-run city of Cape Town that through all your efforts in trying to pretend or paint the illusion that this is a city for all, the mere fact that the religious call to pray is still a topic is a clear contradictory of this. When you guys legitimized the complaint in two thousand and nineteen, did you even consider that this took place within our holy month of Ramadan? And that too for following centuries-old practices. Now, when Zina Tull Islam was insulted by this city being issued fines and letters for practicing a century-old practice, the rights of one individual was put in above that of an entire community. By putting out a press statement or media statement using a pacifying approach to misguide our people is a gross breach of trust portraying that this will protect all our masjids and all our churches from being vulnerable to noise complaints. The DA is acting in bad faith. In conclusion, Madam Speaker, we are not blinded by how this DA chose to play politics with religion in making this motion null and void in the last hour, and I thank you.
Thank you, councillor Satoshi, Alderman Satoshi?
Well, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think the mayor is disingenuous here. The mayor had an opportunity to table the amendment when he came in as a mayor. If he was not comfortable with the bylaw that was passed by his organization, the Democratic Alliance, in previous years. Now the good put the motion forward and the mayor unilaterally take the views of good and make those views as his views. Secondly, the mayor has actually undermined the authority of this council. In terms of the dedication, the issue of bylaw cannot be delegated to the mayor. The issue of the bylaw has got a process to follow. The council must take that process to public participation. We source the views of the communities around the amendment. Now, the mayor, yesterday, because of the pressure that we are going to debate the motion of the good today, he wants to project himself to the public that he is the one that is making the changes in the bylaw that was passed by the Democratic Alliance. That is the hypocrisy of a highest order. Here, Madam Speaker, we're dealing with a mayor that is consulting with people that are going to mislead him. Here in this council, when the good party was tabling this, he goes to his master and go and consult in view of ours. Here, Alderman JP Smith is giving instruction. And we want to warn you, mayor, we are going to sit on you as long as you are going to do things that are in conflict in terms of the procedures of council. The procedure of council, you can't make an amendment. The amendment is made by council after a process of public participation. So this amendment that the mayor is proposing now, when is it going to go for public participation? We hear the views of the communities.
Thank you, councillor.
We are really cautioning that let us not do things that are not enshrined in the legislation. Otherwise, we are making mockery of this council.
Thank you, councillor Soli?
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh, good day, Speaker and colleagues. Thank you for your long overdue media statement dated the twenty seventh of April twenty twenty two on the city update standard operating procedure to confirm that noise nuisance complaints do not apply to places of worship. But that is all it is, a statement. Out of thousands of complaints, the DA-run city legitimized the Adhan as a noise nuisance. And only when pressure was exerted and was any form of change is considered. The delays in the process, however, to exempt the calls of prayers from being a noise nuisance is however very concerning. During the time of delays, religious institutions remain vulnerable to uncertainty and complaints. And for this city of Cape Town indeed needs to level an apology to all affected. To constitute a noise implies a certain decibel range, that amount to causing damage or infliction of harm to the physique of the complainant. Indeed, we are certain that there are those eagerly awaiting to raise complaints on the decibels of the Adhan, the church bells and other religious sounds as the devil could never tolerate a call to pray and not to mention raising concerns when zoning, with zoning issues. Al Jamar has always been respectful and alert for the fact that religious calls to pray as not being a noise nuisance. We respect the heritage and culture of the relevant affected religions and the rights to worship. But we appreciate that the DA-run city of Cape Town, with some pressure of opposition parties, has finally come to the realization as well and we thus support the motion that places of worship such as churches and mosques shall be exempted from the provisions of the Western Cape Noise Control Regulations and from the provisions of this bylaw for the purpose of religious sounds of calls to pray, ringing of bells and singing. However, insofar as operating lawfully in terms of the Cape Town planning bylaw and its zoning scheme, this words leaves religious institutions vulnerable to interpretations and exclusions. It is requested that clarity be provided and detailed criteria and scope as only zone places of worship. It is requested that clarity be provided and detailed criteria and scope as only zone places of worship would be recognized and what happens to the religious institutions common on the Cape flats and in the informal settlements? Is this the city's way of protecting itself from the many religious institutions arising in the city and its surrounds? Al Jamar further welcomes the mediatory roles that will be considered to resolve disputes for handling noise-related complaints. However, we duly note that public participation in all religions is due. I thank you.
Thank you councillor Christians.
Thank you, speaker. Speaker, I firstly want to agree with the mayor when he says religion should not be abused for political brownie points. South Africans deserve more, but more importantly, Cape Tonians deserve more. However, regarding this motion and the newly announced update on the standard order of procedure, and I quote, "Our new standard operating procedure makes it clear that the bylaw provisions on noise disturbances will not apply to correctly zoned places of worship." Speaker, in reality, Cape Town has hundreds of thousands of residents who congregate on a Sunday morning and Sunday evening predominantly in school halls, civic centers, industrial areas, commercial buildings. In some of our informal settlements and communities, these gatherings take place in garages or even in an open field. Now, speaker, we need to keep in mind, these organizations are registered and they are affiliated to mother bodies or have coverings. They're not illegal gatherings, it's not illegal organizations. How do we accommodate these organizations? Because as it stands, according to this SOP, all of them, hundreds of thousands of people are excluded. Secondly, regarding the completion of this new policy document, the mayor mentioned earlier his consultation with the Muslim Judicial Council. I would like to know which church organizations were consulted to make sure that we continue to achieve our goal as a city in which we strive to continue to give every faith community in this city the peace of mind knowing that the issue of noise and nuisance is sorted. Keeping in mind, the city also previously had the religious leaders task team with the primarily mandate to bridge the gap between the city and the local church. In closing, I want to take this opportunity to also thank the mayor for his submission of comments on the 21st of April 2022 on behalf of the city of Cape Town, calling on the National Department of Health to abandon the current draft regulations which would require churchgoers to introduce processes and procedures where congregants would need to produce a vaccine certificate in order to attend church. Just yesterday, thousands of South Africans, Cape Tonians included, marched to the Constitutional Court in defense of our constitutional rights and freedoms. Just like the submission done to the Health Department was on behalf of all Cape Tonians, mayor, can we make sure that the SOPs are done and updated on behalf of all Cape Tonians? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mozwaki. Councillor Kavash, are you downstairs?
Okay, he's not on the list, it's the speaker. Unless he was added.
Right, then if he's not on the list, there is, okay, carry on.
Okay.
Madam speaker, Kavash is not on the list.
Thank you, speaker.
Carry on, sir.
Yes, the engagement with all religious communities started back in 2018, speaker. And I want to, in supporting the amendment by the mayor, to say that it is necessary so that we can dispel the fear and the fear mongering that has been perpetuated, especially in 2019.
Can you listen to the speaker, please?
All religious organizations ought to be respected in terms of the constitution. And that SOP seeks to do that. And I wish to clarify that what we are dealing with, speaker, is a motion which in terms of the rules ought to be debated in council, accepted or defeated in council. So I hear other speakers are saying, when is the public participation going to take place? We are not dealing with the amendment of the bylaw. No bylaw has been amended here in council today. This is a motion that is before the speaker and before council. And it is supposed to be finished here as a motion. We have not opened any bylaw process or amendment process here, speaker. So with that said, it is a progressive move because it says clearly on the places of worship, there is a section on that SOP that speaks to the places of worship. And it says that they will not be bothered, they will not be hindered, they will not be curtailed because they are operating on properly zoned places. I don't know where else will you get that? And it speaks to all kinds and types of religion, all the Christianity, Islamic or Rastafarian sightsee in Kailecha, the ZCC in the Out Bay, the ZCC in Ilitha Park in Kailecha, all religion. Thank you very much, speaker.
Can I speak on the item, speaker? Councillor, speaker, can I also speak on this item?
You didn't indicate you wanted to speak on the item.
I'm indicating that because I see a lot of speakers.
No, I'm not going to take more speakers, we're wrapping up the item. The mayor will conclude, the mayor will conclude on this council. Because it's the same way the ANC provided an extra speaker. We are now moving on to the wrapping up and then we'll go into the vote on the amendment and the main motion.
On a point of clarity, speaker.
Councillor Badeza, councillor Badeza, be quiet, there's a speaker on the table.
On a point of clarity, speaker.
That's fine, there's no point of clarity, the mayor is speaking.
Speaker, I need clarity, but speaker, I need clarity. I'm sure the mayor won't mind, would you, mayor?
What is the point of clarity?
And councillor Little, he's asking councillor Little a question, undermining you to give him that authority to do so. So the mayor must not do that.
All right.
Yes, please don't do it.
Let me apologize, madam speaker.
Can we move on? A point of order, before you move on, mayor.
Alliance. And secondly, and thirdly, speaker, on the order that I want to raise here, I think the mayor is standing on podium to respond to the issues that have been raised by the speakers. And instead of doing that, he is not doing it, he is degrading the council down. Thirdly, speaker, don't wait, may he come, ample time, we've got hours to respond to us here, unlimited time. Thirdly, speaker.
We not have the dialogue, please?
No, he didn't respond.
Ah, you're starting the dialogue, why are you stopping it now?
The mayor didn't respond to me. Thirdly, speaker, I want to raise, I want to raise it here for record that as weeps of the political parties in this council, we are not.
Really a victory for common sense in a city that joys plurality when it comes to multiple faiths. And today, in another little private note sent to me by the MJC, which I've asked them if I can read, they say that they appreciate the relationship created for us to talk directly to each other and not allow, and I will leave this here, councillor Little, not that you are named, but if the shoe fits, not allow opportunistic people to speak on behalf of the city or the MJC. I move the amendments, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillors, we're going to vote on the amendments.
Madam speaker, on a point of order.
Clarity, a point of clarity?
Point of clarity, madam speaker.
Speaker, I need clarity, there is an amendment that the mayor has put, now that you are going to vote on. On this amendment, the title of it says, Amendment to Good Motion on Religious Noise Through Call to Prayer. Goes the first sentence, it says, to amend councillor Little's motion by deleting all the words after motion, meaning that there is no motion.
Councillor.
What is the mayor amending to?
Okay, he's amending that motion with the current wording that he put forward.
What is he proposing to council? Because if he's saying he's amending the motion.
Okay, councillor, did you get the piece of paper? That's what he's proposing. Councillor Little, your point of clarity?
Madam speaker, I just need to understand, in the haste to get the motion passed because there were several opportunities to get this motion through to council and I hear that the mayor's got to cover his back and spin like he normally does. But I noticed that point B also speaks about specific and appropriate zoning. So I don't quite understand what the speaker, the mayor is talking about that my motion is out of order or out of line. What would have been very good is that the mayor could have called all of us in, we are multi-parties here, and could have spoken to us. But it is clear that he was caught on the back foot. And I am very proud today to say thank you to my colleagues and to the movement for making the DA move their backside on this motion, thank you so much.
Thank you for that. We now have an amendment before us as tabled by the mayor. Those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. Those against the amendment? All right, we have the Freedom Front plus, we're in a vote, I don't want to get into a debate. Are you for or against?
We are against.
Against, thank you very much. Those against Freedom Front, plus any other parties against? Then councillor Little?
Madam speaker, we are not voting just because we want to vote against it. I need to understand, after this, is it going for public participation?
No, this is an amendment to a motion, it's not an amendment to a bylaw. You have the amendment on the table, do you support the amendment to the motion?
Once this motion has been passed, but hold on ma'am, I just want clarity from you. Once this motion has been passed, are we going to see the amendment of the bylaw?
It is not necessary, if you heard, if you read the motion and the motivation.
A standard operating procedure can.
Are you against or are you for? You're against, Good is against the amendment, the Freedom Front plus is against the amendment.
The CCC is against.
Speaker, because of what Sattachi has raised, which is very clear that after the word motion, there is a big paragraph written by councillor Little.
Okay.
Who would want legal opinion so that we are then entering into something that we are not. Because yourself and the mayor are not making us.
All right, okay, I get it, I will get it. I'll ask the legal advisor to explain that the amendment then takes the place of the substantive motion. Can you respond? There's no motion left because of the amendment, correct. Okay, so that was my understanding, thank you.
And as madam speaker, I move the motion into this council. The relevant department immediately intervene to stop the illegal mining on both pieces of lands. The land, the land must be fenced and protected by the city of Cape Town until line department is ready to proceed with the project. I thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Kasim, DA.
Thank you, thank you, speaker. Madam speaker, oops, fellow councillors, I just for a moment because the motion will be very quick, the repudiation of this motion and the changing of it. I just want to say kindly join me in observing a word of prayer as we come to the end over the last few days of the month of Ramadan. I just want to take two, three seconds and just say a prayer. Allah ma innaka kari mun tuhibbul afu afwana. Allah mansur na wa ikhwanana wa uladana wa ummahatana fi filistin wa fi kulli makan ya robbal alameen. Alhamdulillah, robbal alameen. Thank you very much. Madam speaker, this item or motion posed a risk to the city and the future development of the site. The site is earmarked for housing development. The illegal sand mining, and the operative word there is illegal. Illegal sand mining is a disturbance to the critical biodiversity. That is the loss of endemic endangered vegetation and also the subsequent habitat loss. Which brings me to the following, and the president said just before this item, I want to also reiterate that same principle here by stating that I hereby amend the motion of councillor Lombi by deleting everything after noting that. And I will replace it with, number one, illegal sand mining in the city must be stopped. Secondly, the case of Earth One, Quez Street, is being investigated by law enforcement and the metro police. Thirdly, metro police will undertake visible patrols at hotspots to prevent illegal sand mining. And fourthly, the councillor has not provided a precise location for the old 40 road site mentioned, making it quite difficult to investigate the complaint. Therefore, therefore the request, the councillor to provide specific directions to the other illegal sand mining operation to allow the officials to investigate this case properly and also encourage all councillors to report all incidents of illegal sand mining in their hordes. I move this amended motion.
We don't support a deleted motion, nah? We don't do that. Councillor Makazi?
Thank you, speaker. To what councillor Kasim has just stated now in amending the motion, I just want to understand, have we made the DA vagar up now to now look at all illegal sand mines? Because you've been aware, you've been running the city and I think councillor Lombi is referring specifically to this one called Earth One. So why are you now, must we accept that you must now be here to amend all the motions submitted by the councillors? Because you can't be asking for motions and they must follow processes, they attend back and forth in the manner in which they are crafted and written. And at the end of the day, most times when motions are presented, they get to be referred either to a portfolio or to a relevant line department or wherever. Now we sit here with motions written by councillors on their own accord and we find DA councillors amending motions that don't even belong to them, that's out of order.
So are you making a recommendation that we send this to the planning committee?
We still to the original motion by the councillor and we discuss and deal with it and have a resolution to that. If Kasim has an amendment, he must make his own motion.
All right. So.
We're sleeping, nah?
Councillor Kasim is entitled to make an amendment.
I'll do it, but he must not be reminded by us to make the amendment because he wrote a motion.
But then he would make his own motion.
Equally, he must write his own motion.
All right, but now he's made an amendment.
What he has done now is messing up the whole thing that has been written by the council because he wants his own view to supersede what the councillor said. And because we have numbers here, we're going to pull those and agree with his amendment to the motion.
So, so let's just send the motion and the amendment to the planning committee.
Whatever you do, but that motion must remain as it is and it must be attended with the content that the council has written it in.
Madam speaker, madam speaker.
Speaker, the motion should go to the, the motion should go to the sub-council, speaker. It's not a matter for the portfolio committee. If there's illegal sand mining, we must respond to that issue. There is no need to send the portfolio committee, it must be sent to the sub-council resolved there if they want to further debate the motion.
I was making example by portfolio, I didn't say must go. I'm saying previously, they would do that. If it goes, it should go to the sub-council, then that's your submission.
This interpersonal dialogue here councillor Makazi.
We learn from you, we learn from you.
Councillor?
You are the one that has taught us.
You learned at the feet of the master, okay, stop now, please. Madam speaker, clarity. I'm going to give councillor Good and councillor Smith an opportunity and then we're going to move. Yeah, but councillors, little.
Madam speaker, just a point of clarity, I hear that you are sending that amendment through to the portfolio. Why didn't you do it with the previous motion?
Wasn't raised at that point, councillor Smith?
Waiting for the harders to stop speaking.
Can we please, can we please calm down councillor Alderman Smith?
Speaker, effectively what the councillor has done is speak against the motion. So I think that you will have to, if you bring the motion to a vote, we can determine. But on the operational matter, I have raised with the senior safety and security staff the issue of the sand mining, specifically this one. We have attempted to go and see if there were any service requests logged through the appropriate channels by the councillor so that we can determine the exact location. And I just want to repeat to councillors, it's quite important. exact location. And I just want to repeat to councillors, it's quite important that when you have these kind of matters, that you log those service requests. If there is no effective response to those service requests, we have really invested very diligently in an accountability mechanism to make sure those get followed up and delivered on and that whether or not we can hold management accountable.
You want to tell me all these years you are not aware of the illegal mining?
So it's imperative that the service requests then get escalated to myself for the ED by the councillor so that we can follow up at the time. May I, Speaker, this is a very belated way of intervening in this.
All right. So we will move this item to the sub-council. Councillor Alderman-Sotashi?
Madam Speaker, I'm calling you into order. You are exposing yourself on inconsistency. The point that we are raising here, you read the business of the day in the opening. Part of that agenda that we adopted when we opened the council, the motion item is there. Councillor Lombi is bringing the motion according to rules of council, to council. Now Alderman Smith and also the deputy mayor are saying, the motion, one of them is saying must go to the portfolio committee, the other one is saying must go to the sub-council.
Nobody said, okay, so we're going to, we are going to move?
Council is the final arbiter of all discussions that...
You want to deal with it now, we'll deal with it now. We have an amendment from councillor Kassim. Those in favor of the recommendation or the amendment by councillor Kassim, please indicate. The DA is in favor. Those against? The ANC is against? Goods against? CCC is against? PAs against? PA is against? All right, thank you.
All council is against, Speaker.
All right. So the amendment is carried, the substantive motion falls away. So we move on to item thirty?
Speaker?
In item thirty, we've got councillor Tandela.
Madam Speaker?
Councillor Tandela.
I think you should take classes, Speaker, to learn our African names because you are very bad. And I don't think it's pretty. Anyways, greetings. I'm a bit worried, Speaker, especially for us new councillors of the teachings that you are doing here. You give us a booklet to learn the processes of this council, but when we come here, we're seeing different things. Be that as it may, Speaker, on the item, Speaker, people of informal settlement are still crying for basic civic delivery, especially people of in COVID-19, Barcelona and a lot more of other informal settlement in the city of Cape Town. However, we continuously monitoring the improved rapid response of the C3 notification, especially in the disadvantaged areas of our people, who would like to caution the council and the department to slow down on the large amount spent on consultation, but advise rather, they need to employ young black people that are qualified living in the proximity of these areas such as Pontefeu, Kailicha and otherwise, as the cardinal pillar of the EFF state, building state and government capacity which lead to abolishment of tenders. The progress report of the water and sanitation portfolio have items that are still on red and it cannot be that the directorate sits here with this item on the red and condoms this as a norm in service delivery. We note this progress report is from the previous administration. We hope that the new MMC and the mayor would adhere to these commitments and deliver proper water to all communities. In conclusion, Madam Speaker, as this item is for noting on behalf of the thousands of EFF voters and people of Cape Town, we are hereby noting and advising on how you can improve your services in your, to our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Alderman Limburg.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Just to the EFF councillor, he would note that in terms of the indicators for unemployed apprentices, unemployed trainees amongst many other development orientated programs that the water and sanitation department runs, they have far exceeded their targets and that shows our commitment to meaningful investment into young skilled people. On the employment equity side, Speaker, it is important just to note that all staffing indicators are essentially linked. So if we hone in, for example, on the filling of vacancies, here, Speaker, filling of vacancies were impacted by a corporate freeze during the hard lockdown period, when the city then took a decision to reassess and reprioritize its resources and address the real risks and impacts that was brought upon by COVID. This meant that there was a corporate backlog in terms of vacancies, which ultimately would have also impacted a range of employment equity related targets. So through the fast-tracking processes that corporate HR is now instituting, we'll have more filling of posts either through external appointments or internal appointments and promotions. And the water and sanitation department, for example, is very well known in prioritizing internal upward mobility within the department. And this is how you essentially realize the investments in programs such as the workspace skills program, and that's how you achieve genuine transformation within the workplace. In terms of provision of services within formal settlements, yes, the department missed its target by seven taps. This was as a result of a lag period between an old and a new tender. During this period, there was also a builders break and the loading of a new contract onto SAP and the purchase orders being issued resulted in that lag. But the department is making that up and those outcomes will be seen in the next quarter. But it is important just to point out, Speaker, that indicator three J, for example, which looks at the provision of sanitation services, here the department far exceeded its target by providing an additional 1,111 toilets above the target set for the department. In addition, through the city's informal settlements' basic services COVID response plan, for example, Speaker, more than 100 million liters of water was provided to newly formed informal settlements. So where we were lagging in providing formal taps, we may provision to provide basic services such as water through other means. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much councillor Gunga.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you, thank you, Speaker. I thought councillor Sansia Limberg, she's gone. She was crying to us that she is no longer an MMC. Speaker?
Councillors, please allow the councillor to continue so we can make progress.
No. Yes, thank you, Speaker. I thought JP will find another position for her.
Madam Speaker, point of order. Madam Speaker?
Ah, where is the order?
Point of order.
Councillor Punt?
Where is the order? No.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Where is the order?
And ANC councillor?
No, where is the order?
Yes, Alderman, and it is, how many, they tell...
Councillor? Councillors, please. Councillor Dembuzo, will you stop it now?
No, order.
Well, don't wear the red, you stand out.
Madam Speaker, there is no respect, there is no respect. There's...
Madam Speaker?
From the ANC side, from the ANC, there is no respect for a councillor. How many times I call Alderman, JP Smith, JP over the floor. Madam Speaker, that needs to stop.
Keep quiet, man, keep quiet.
Madam Speaker? Alderman Smith?
Order, Madam Speaker?
Sorry, it was nice, it was...
Speaker, so this morning, one of our colleagues across the floor unhinged because he felt he was insulted. But it's this kind of consistent, churlish, childish, infantile, offensive and putrid behavior that begets the odd backlash, that begets the odd response from our side. We have to sit and listen to this infantile preschool howling all day every council meeting.
Ah, yeah, you called someone stupid.
That is my question, Speaker. The mayor asks that you maintain decorum in this house, Speaker.
Councillors, let the councillor finish.
I shall at the floor, Speaker. May I ask that you maintain order in this house as you are charged to do and deal with those kind of comments, those kind of baits, and that you nip them in the bud when they start so that you don't encourage us by way of reciprocation to respond later because then there's more of that little howling and wailing.
Thank you. We're moving on now, please. I'm not going to go to that. Where's your councillor that was talking? Are you finished councillor? All right, hurry up.
No, Madam Speaker?
My time has been taken away by councillor JP Smith.
Okay, this item is for noting. Thank you. We'll move on?
Yes.
Councillor Jordan? You're not finished. Well, then you need to keep your councillors quiet so that you can finish on time. Your time is up.
No, no, no.
A piece of our council. You can have one...
No, no, Speaker, it's Alderman. No, no, it can't be. It's Alderman JP Smith who has taken my time. You allowed him.
No, no. Speaker, I had... You insulted him and then created a...
No, 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 Speaker.
Speaker, I had a point of order.
Order, order.
I have three minutes, Speaker.
Speaker, I had a point of order. I raised my hand before JP Smith...
What is your point of order?
That in this council, we can't be held accountable for discussions between two people because councillor Kuna said here the discussion with councillor Limberg, where does JP enter in that and bend?
Madam Speaker, point of order?
Speaker?
Councillor Makazi, you refer to councillor Alderman JP Smith. Now let's finish this debate and we're moving on. One minute, one minute.
Speaker, I have two, I have three minutes.
Two minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you, Speaker.
JP? JP?
Thank you.
Councillor?
You see, you see, Speaker? Thank you, Speaker. No, order, order, sir.
You are useless in the pillow. Councillor Makazi, I'm naming you now for the first time. Madam Speaker, point of order.
Order.
Councillor, councillor Gungi?
Thank you, Speaker.
Oh, Speaker.
Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Speaker. We note and welcome the report and hope that the improvement...
Okay, we're moving on. Alderman Jordan?
Order, order, order.
Alderman Jordan?
Speaker, order, please.
No, there's no order, point of order. We're moving on.
No, I'm not down, Speaker.
Well, then you must keep your own councillors in check.
Order, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker?
Alderman Jordan? By JP. How can he keep JP quiet?
Madam Speaker?
Keep JP quiet. Alderman Jordan?
I'm speaking, Speaker.
Madam Speaker?
Point of order. While chapter two, within the ball of rights...
We're moving on.
Section seven, one B.
Madam Speaker?
So everyone has a right and access to water.
Point of order.
Chairperson, our portfolio and water and sanitation are there to monitor and evaluate the impact and performance during the second quarter.
Madam Speaker?
Of twenty-one and twenty-two.
Councillors?
It's your people that...
Councillors, I'm calling you now to order. If you do not keep quiet, then please leave. Your time is up. Your time is up. Alderman?
Look that side also.
Alderman Jordan? No?
Speaker, I'm speaking.
Alderman Jordan, please continue.
But I think you can't hear me, Speaker. Speaker, based on what Alderman Limburg is saying, I don't want to waste your time.
We will go back to a virtual meeting.
I agree fully with Alderman Limburg and the two councillors that spoke before us is on our portfolio and I can't understand why they object to this.
Speaker?
They agree to the report, thank you.
Councillor?
Now I'm a speaker. Speaker?
Can someone just take a record of these councillors interjecting for the fines, please? We will go through the disciplinary process. Thank you.
Speaker?
Order. Councillor Jordan, are you finished?
Point of order, Speaker?
I'm not going to take any more points of order. No. I have a point of order, Speaker. What is your point of order?
My point of order, Speaker, is on you.
Councillor, you don't?
No, councillor Kuna is on the speakers this year. He wants to be speaking and you allow councillor Jordan from the...
Then, then why did you not pull your councillor's order?
Speaker, yes, order on the banqueting hall.
And all councillors to speak freely and fairly in this item.
But then your councillors must behave themselves.
No, you must ask JP to behave first. We are not going to be charged by...
I'm going to counsel JP.
Allow Kuna to speak. Then you allow councillor to speak.
Councillor Jordan will speak and I will give you one minute after that and that's...
No, 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 no.
Speaker, I just want to indicate that yes, order on the banqueting hall. Even the ANC and the EFF behave very well. But just on the point of item thirty, I don't want to waste the council's time, the chairperson or speaker. Alderman Limburg projected herself very well and the portfolio noted this report. And the executive mayor and mayor will deliberate and bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you. The item is moved. The next item is item thirty-two.
Councillor Kuna is not speaking at that minute. Speaker, you said you are going to allow Kuna one minute.
But you didn't stop, but you didn't stop talking. Are you all going to be quiet? We'll get them quiet.
Thank you, Speaker. And the manager who always advises you wrong next to you to say I must not speak.
You're wasting your own time councillor.
Yes. We note and welcome the report and hope that the improvement should be done on the percentage spent on repairs and maintenance. That is way below in the report. Percentage spent on capital budget, that is below. Percentage vacancy rate, that is way below. It must be noted. Percentage non-revenue water, that is below. Percentage of river and flood symbols with equally count, that is way below. It must be noted. Percentage spent on capital budget, that is way below on the report. Percentage of declarations of interest, completed, but way above. Because it should be hundred percent official, that means they must declare. It can't be councillors, they must declare in the council and forced to declare. But officials, it's only seventy-five percent that have declared their interest. It cannot be. The directorate are required to report on a quarterly basis to authority and treasure regulation five point three one requires the accounting officer of the constitutional. Treasure regulations twenty-nine point three point one and thirty point two point one, that the accounting officer said that the accounting officer, these guidelines are aimed at improving transparency, which there's no proper and final transparency in this report. So this report, we are noting the report, but it must be improvement in the report. Thank you, Speaker.
All right. Thank you. Item thirty-two. Councillor Gashaker?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you make this house ungovernable. Good afternoon, everybody, councillors. Without wasting any time, we as ANC acknowledge seeing the safety and security plans that were cabled by the city of Cape Town. While others applaud loudly, our applause are subdued because we kept asking ourselves as to where in the plans does our constituents fit in, which is the poor. You can see that this is a plan for rich. It mentioned one, few things like visible patrols, cameras and so on. Where do you find such fancy stuff in the Cape flats? You never find that. Madam Speaker, in the report, page fifty-five, the report does not speak to the poor communities at all. Our people are not serviced by the city in terms of safety and security at all. Why I'm saying this? CCTV cameras are not installed in the crime sports areas, but in the other areas, there are CCTV cameras that monitored and hundreds of law enforcement officers are deployed in those areas whilst they are safe. The only time that are deployed in our townships is where they are though. They are there to destroy sharks, but not for crime elements or monitor. There are many infrastructures like sewer pump stations that are completely vandalized. Where are the security officers? Where need to be monitored? In adequate lighting, there is a very little attempt to increase the number of streetlights in the vulnerable communities. All in all, they just use them for voting. The DA administration does not care for our people at all. There are many unregistered scrap yards in our communities. What is the plans of the law enforcement agencies in those unregistered scrap yards? What is the plans of the law enforcement agencies in those unregistered scrap yards? Uh, in conclusion, Madam Speaker, we, we, I hope we have given you a food to thoughts and that you will adjust your plans accordingly. Failure to do, that means you will be failing our communities. And you will be responsible for a number of deaths. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Councillor Mohammed.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Um, Madam Speaker, this noting item being the Safety and Security twenty-one, twenty-two second quarter report outlines the directorate's performance during a very difficult period. The portfolio committee has taken this oversight role very seriously and there are few mentions within the report that needs highlighting within its own context. Um, the portfolio committee recognizes that the directorate specifically exists and operates in a fluid environment. An environment where the situation on the streets of Cape Town often changes and I'm very happy to see that the directorate's ability to adapt quickly in the efforts to keep Cape Town safe. Madam Speaker, I would like to highlight the number of LPR technology interventions um, since it was raised by the ANC councillor about um, the camera situation. Um, the LPR technology intervention by Metropolis, the second quarter saw one hundred and thirteen interventions, which is eighty-seven intervention short of the quarterly target of two hundred. I'm mentioning this because the technological interventions in fact showed eighty-seven less incidences um, for Metropolis to respond to, thus allowing the members to direct their resources adequately. But it must also be noted that while the city of Cape Town takes the necessary steps to improve the functionality of our metropolitan police force, at the same time, the Mangahung Metro had the decision to launch their Metropolis force receded by National Treasury for not following due process, which is absolutely bizarre considering that the ANC meticulously went through with a fine comb the processes to date, but failed to do that where they govern. I think the opportunity for comrades to eat is more important than going through due process. And another item worth noting is the baseline target for fire and rescue services to respond to incidences within fourteen minutes that has dropped. During the um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty term, the baseline was set at seventy-seven point one nine percent and the portfolio had opted to set the target at eighty percent for this round. Unfortunately, during this quarter, the Fire and Rescue Service could only achieve sixty-eight point two seven percent. To put this in context, the drop is not attributed to the quality of our Fire and Rescue Service, but instead the need that our brave firefighters have to wait for additional support when entering volatile areas. An example of this was most recently demonstrated in the tragic Lunga fire, which saw fire hoses being cut. I will take this opportunity, Madam Speaker, to appeal to the residents of Cape Town to protect our members as they try to save lives and property. Madam Speaker, on average for this quarter, um, with the exception of a few setbacks within their own context, the Safety and Security Directorate has not only met its targets but in many cases exceeded them. Madam Speaker, the twenty-one, twenty-two second quarter was especially difficult for the Safety and Security Directorate as during this time, we should be reminded that the eastern and the interior parts of South Africa were in fact burning during the July riots. Sorting through all the fear mongering, the fake news, the sensationalism during that period to determine what should be responded to, I am proud to say that we did not have one successful incident of mass looting that had taken place in the city. The portfolio committee will continue to apply pressure on this directorate and I implore the members with the committee and the director to continue to push the envelope to demonstrate what can be achieved if we refuse to accept the mediocre. Um, I move this item to be noted, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. We all accept the recommendation to put noting. Councillor Makazi.
Clarity from the councillor that has just spoken. He is saying that law enforcement and city police are performing based on the targets, it's closer to two hundred. I, I'm just interested, where exactly are they working? Is he aware that in the area of Kuguleto, there's none?
Okay, we, we're not dealing with that, we're dealing with the report, Councillor Makazi. That's not a point of clarity.
He indicated that they are performing and closer to two hundred. I just want to sit to hear where.
It's not a point of clarity. Councillor Mohammed, can you address that specific thing?
Happy to address that specifically, um, Madam Speaker. I was referring to LPR targets of two hundred for the quarter and Metropolis was only able to, to, to get one hundred and thirteen interventions, down by eighty-seven short of the target. But that is specifically because the LPR cameras only pinged one hundred and thirteen issues.
Thank you. My apologies, I'm clear now. Okay, thank you. Um, so the item is noted, we're moving on to item thirty-three. And the speaker there.
Bangeting, Speaker.
Who is that?
Councillor Navas. Clarity to the first speaker.
Councillor, what is your point of clarity?
That is, is the councillor aware that the, it chooses that there is liquid that is invested in the poor areas? I wanted to ask clarity that is he aware that all the lip areas are poor areas which are deployed now with.
Order, order. Thank you, Councillor. Thank you.
Secondly, is that what forty has more sensitive cameras than any? Lastly, Speaker, is that Kylie Cha has more sensitive cameras than Woodstock?
Your order, thank you. Uh, we're moving on to item thirty-three, Councillor Cupido.
Uh, thank you, Speaker. Speaker, the item brought before us brings much concern. As good we previously highlighted, the concerns with regard to deviations approved by the city manager of which the DA refused to listen to. The outrageous and indefensible decision from the Democratic Alliance around the city of Cape Town is appalling and outright a smack in the face of the residents of Cape Town. Speaker, this DA-led council are expecting us to note and support the payment of legal fees for a Mr Talmakis, head of the rogue SIU who is criminally charged with fraud and corruption relating to, related to a city housing contract. The decision that has, that the people of Cape Town will pay for Mr Talmakis legal cost through a deviated procurement process and in being reported in the fine print signed off by the city manager and mayor, he Lewis brings more concerns. According to the policy provision of legal representation for city employees and councillors in terms of section one oh nine A of the Municipal System Act, under responsible persons to approve legal representation two one three says that the city manager in respect of employees other than mentioned in two one two, which reads the executive mayor in respect of councillors, including the speaker, the city manager and managers directly accountable to the city manager after consulting the works of various parties only when the matter relates to a councillor. Speaker, do we have a councillor involved in this matter or is the DA administration indirectly telling us that Mr Talmakis is directly accountable to the city manager? Speaker, the rationale for paying for the legal cost of someone accused of defrauding you is simply bizarre. Speaker, why is Mr Talmakis being defended by the city and the Democratic Alliance? What is his bargaining chip? Speaker, the report to council are exposed. The report to council also exposed the lies of Alderman Smith, who told media in several interviews after being asked about the existence of this rogue SIU and that it was headed by Mr Talmakis, who is being prosecuted in Witbank for tempering with police dockets and now fraud within the city of Cape Town. That Mr Talmakis are not the head of the SIU. However, Speaker, the report confirms he is the head of this rogue unit that operates outside the law. Speaker, when the Miko member for Safety and Security found out that the national minister wanted to remove Metropolis from this metro and placed them under steps, Alderman Smith was very upset and started working on building his own little police force with Mr Talmakis um, to assist. A decision taken that now gets the taxpayers to pay for this. The mayor must ensure he provides clarity on the, on his reasoning behind his co-signature for this deviation, especially since the oversight responsibility of councillors are removed over the legal department, who now falls directly under the city manager and outside of any portfolio. Speaker, I also wish to remind this Democratic Alliance-led city of Cape Town that the residents of Cape Town is not stupid as what they wish to treat them. The DA administration wished to try and use policy by saying that it's within policy that they are paying for this legal cost. However, it remained outrageous and point blank a waste of taxpayers' money. Speaker, in conclusion, the Democratic Alliance, city of Cape Town administration simply cannot see the concerns of this, of the residents of Cape Town being frivolous. The item brings concern of irregular expenditure, it's fruitless and wasteful expenditure and must be seen as unauthorized expenditure. Speaker, good notes. This as a serious matter and believe that it must be referred to IMPIC for investigation. The policy that this decision was taken on for the approval for legal representation with will be based on the following, and I quote, "Legal proceedings have been instituted against the employee or councillor as the result of any act or mission by the employee or councillor in the exercise of his or her powers or the performance of his or her duties." Close quote. Speaker, Mr Talmakis' duty is clear according to the ethics and code of conduct of staff members. It is clear that staff should act in the best interest of the residents of the city of Cape Town and the city of Cape Town. Therefore, the section used saying any act cannot apply, it's unethical to say the least. Speaker, is this DA-led city of Cape Town council telling us that it is okay for this council to defend fraud? Good, therefore wish to place it on record that we do not support this item and believe that it must go to IMPIC. Speaker, should this council support this item and refuse to have this decision investigated, good will have to submit this to the public protector for further investigation. I thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fadil Adams.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, Speaker, you may remember about five months ago, I was chastised in this very house for calling out some senior members in supply chain management with regard to tender number two forty-three Q. The head of SIU has since been arrested for tampering with said tender two forty-three Q. Understand that about a month ago, I messaged our Miko member for housing for some information with regards to tender two forty-three Q. He has refused steadfastly to provide this information because the proof of the corruption lies right there. Speaker, you yourself, two weeks ago, asked me to see the information. I said to you, I'm happy to bring it to your office. You never gave me the time and the date as requested. Today, I sit here and I'm being told that the municipal manager has signed off and expects this house to allow two thousand rand an hour to be paid for the defence of Reynolds Talmakis, the head of the rogue SIU. Now, I'm sitting here that we are expected to pay in excess of two hundred thousand rand. This from a city that says it has no money to help its poorest of its poor. I'm told that this city will run like a business. It will be as efficient as any business. But you need to show me the corporation that is going to pay for the legal defence of any criminal that operates with in his, with his entity, as an entity. There simply isn't one. I need to know, is the city preparing itself for the eventual arrest, arrest of the city manager? Of the head of SEM? Of the head of Treasury? Of the head of forensics? Because these people are going to jail. Speaker, I ask you again, in your office, for the time and the date, for me to come and show you the evidence in my possession with regards to seven hundred million rands worth of theft in the department. The reason Reynolds Talmakis is going to jail. Speaker, do not cut my mic like you did last time. You can answer me at the end. You can answer me at the end or like you said earlier.
Two minutes is up, we will make an appointment for you to come to the office.
You never warned me to finish.
I'm warning you now. Conclude.
Finally, Speaker, just before I go, I would love to understand how the man that has dodged the media and the police, our municipal manager, gets to sign off on this. I would like the mayor to tell us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Witboy.
Good day, Speaker. May our visitors in the gallery, the media and all the members of this august house. I want to thank our Muslim community for their selfless sacrifice during the month of Ramadan and wish you well for the upcoming Eid, as we are saying on the Cape flaps, La Barang. Report C thirty-three in terms of Supply Chain Management Act Regulations, Regulation thirty-six and the Supply Chain Management Policy Class three thirty for the period sixteen March to ten April twenty twenty-two. This item is for noting. The city of Cape Town is a well-run city. We are financially sound and we pride ourselves on seventeen years of consecutive unqualified orders. As a progressive city, we are setting the bar for service delivery for metros around our beloved country and we will keep on improving service delivery standards throughout through sound municipal governance models. Speaker, I want to draw this council's attention to NHA A and B of this report. I do believe that all members of this august house are familiar with the content of this report. The report has no financial implications, no policy or strategy impacts. The report was legislatively vetted and it is legally compliant. Speaker, I recommend that the deviations authorized by the city manager in terms of supply chain policy and regulations for the period sixteen March to ten April twenty twenty-two be noted by council. And this closes a note to the council's annual financial statements. I so move, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, you indicated you wanted to speak.
Uh, thanks, Speaker. I'll just speak from here. I just want to respond to some of the points that Councillor Cupido and Councillor Adams have made. Uh, firstly, Councillor Cupido, the practice in the state is that if you are accused of a matter that relates to the course or scope of your job, then it is legit.
Keep going.
Then it is legitimate for the employer to pay the defence costs. So long as it is well understood, of course, that if you are later found to be guilty of those charges, then you are liable for the full refund to the state. And I've confirmed that that is the practice in, in, across the public service. So now this is another example, Madam Speaker and Alderman Sotashi, where I'd love to ask Councillor Cupido a question, but I won't ask a question because now I've, I've been forbidden from, from doing that. But I will just post via you, Madam Speaker, a theoretical example. If a special advisor to a national minister is accused of involving herself inappropriately and improperly in a tender for, let's say, a border fence, which turns into a national disgrace, is the National Department of Public Works similarly covering the defence costs of said special advisor? I suspect the answer to that question is yes. But to be sure, I have submitted a parliamentary question to the national minister in the last couple of days and look forward to the answer. I suspect when the answer comes, Councillor Cupido will be somewhat red-faced. Now, indeed we will, sir. Indeed we will. Ah, now you, now, now you see, now you rely on context. But as I've said, this is the case across the public sector. And if the person involved in this case is found guilty, obviously his career in the city of Cape Town will be over instantaneously and indeed he will be liable to pay back the money. And I suspect, well, I hope the same will be true of said special advisor. Now, Councillor Adams, you have, uh, you have raised the concern around that tender with me many times. And I've given you my commitment that I'll, if there's any evidence of corruption, I'll follow it up. Now, you said to me that you had a recording that you wanted to send me that proved corruption. You played me a minute or two at most of that recording. But in the minute or two that you played me, there was absolutely no evidence whatsoever. You said to me at the time that you could not, for confidentiality reasons, play me the rest of the recording, but that you would send it to me in your words within the next two weeks. That was two months ago. You have never sent me that recording. I repeat my commitment to you, if there's any solid evidence of corruption, it will be dealt with with absolutely zero tolerance. But please do not claim to have such evidence and constantly repeat it in this chamber and then never produce the goods. I would also caution you, Councillor Adams, against using the word rogue in reference to the efforts that the city of Cape Town is making to keep Cape Tonians safer. In so doing, you are falling right into the slip line, into the wake of, uh, In so doing, you are falling right into the slip line, into the wake of National Minister Becky Telle and his coalition partners in, in good, who often use this word rogue to discuss what the city, or to describe what the city is doing to improve safety in the city. I'm, I'm sad, disappointed to hear you now falling into that slip line. There is nothing.
Counselors.
There is nothing rogue about trying to maximize the policy space that the city can occupy to keep Cape Townians safer. Every one of us, every resident of the city is a beneficiary of that effort to maximize that policy space and it is sure as anything going to continue and even more aggressively so.
Thank you, the item is noted.
Point of clarity, Speaker.
No, we're not entertaining, the item is for noting.
Speaker, again, Speaker, Speaker, this is not the DA's house, you all be fair. Stop this bias of yours, man. It's been going on all morning.
Counselor, you should hear yourself.
Madam Speaker, point of order. Madam Speaker, point of.
Counselors, that concludes the open meeting. We're now moving to the confidential agenda and we will terminate the YouTube link and then reconvene for the confidential meeting. Thank you.